And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pleasure of the ladies.
United States of America, here to the public, for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, free and just as one.
Kathy, would you please follow the rule?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Counselor Dilva.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Riche.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, motion, remotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Kathy, would you please follow the rule?
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Counselor Dilva.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Riche.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
I'm muting now.
Thank you.
Counselor Angela Gray and Fire Chief Kinsall join us for the executive session.
Okay.
[1066.44]
Returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. We do not have any presentations or announcements tonight, so this brings us to public hearings. Our first public hearing is regarding local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law. Three dash C, and I will open that to public hearing now. Anyone attending in person would like to come down to the podium in five minutes?
Good evening, my name is Michael Thule. I reside in Augsburg, and as a citizen, I appreciate the opportunity to address city council this evening. I asked city council to support bill one ten, which provides for possible tax letting increase in 2023 more than the tax gap. I suggest you keep your options open pending discussion, the alternative modifications to the proposed 2023 city general fund budget that are on tonight's agenda. Financing the proposed 2020 general fund budget modification that is in bill one seventeen includes an increase in appropriated fund balance by $423,000 to the original proposed budget of $750,000 to $1,173,000. In my opinion, the increases in labor costs for police plus $285,000 to hire four additional police officers, and the increase in labor costs for fire plus $384,000, which I believe is to cover the projected costs for compensation for the current contract with fire department employees, I believe they should not be covered with one-shot financing through use of the fund balance. Instead, recurring revenue should fund such increases so they can continue funding these services beyond 2023. And the only revenue source available at this time controlled by city council to do this is the property tax levy. The proposed 2023 general fund budget modification in bill one twenty-one includes an overtime budget of $20,000 in the fire department budget versus the proposed 655,000 that is in bill one seventeen. The rationale for this reduction is a change from five-man shift to four-man shift in the fire department. While consideration of such a change might be pursued next year by city council and the next city manager, until such a change is collectively bargained, I believe the proposed 2023 general fund budget should include funding for compensation under the current contract, thereby taking a more conservative approach in budgets, budget development. And then a note about the detailed changes that are listed in bill one twenty-one. If city council considers this option as proposed, I believe budgeted compensation in the fire department will result in social security expense close to $20,000 higher than the amount shown in that schedule. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone remotely attending?
First individual is registered as G. Morrow, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open. Okay. I do not see any other hands raised.
The next public hearing is regarding-
Mayor, if I may, you have to declare that public hearing closed. I'm sorry.
I declare that public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is regarding a local law to allow the changes to the Augsburg Municipal Code, section one seven seven entitled sewer rates as dictated by the adoption of the 2023 budget. And I will open after public hearing now. Anyone want to speak down at the podium? Anyone remotely attended?
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. The last public hearing is regarding a local law to allow the changes in the Augsburg Municipal Code, section two fifteen, sections thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, entitled water rates as dictated by the adoption of the 2023 budget. I will open that up to public hearing now. Anyone remote?
I do not see any hands raised.
At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You'll have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Don McCarthy. I was here four weeks ago and gave a presentation to council about how staffing levels affect overtime and hazard pay costs. I hope everyone has had a chance to look over those numbers. I was contemplating whether or not to address council again tonight since I've already presented my figures and hoped that it would initiate some discussion. I looked over tonight's agenda, and I noticed that the new preliminary budget calls for an amended fire department overtime budget of 655,000. Although this number is 367,000 more than the originally proposed budget, it's still more than $100,000 below the absolute minimum that it will cost to provide a five-man minimum staffing for 2023. It was a little disheartening to see that the city chose the budget, the extra overtime and hazard pay costs as opposed to the cost-saving measure of hiring additional personnel. I looked a little further down the agenda and noticed a proposal from councillor Rees recommending that the fire department overtime budget be reduced from the original proposed budget amount of $287,956 to $200,000 with a footnote stating, quote, "Some of the savings come from going to a four-man shift at the fire department. We cannot afford to pay $655,000 in overtime to have a five-man shift and an additional $200,000 in hazard pay," unquote. The second half of that statement is the exact reasoning behind my recommendation to hire four additional firefighters at $38,000 each as opposed to paying the increased overtime and hazard pay cost. I'm assuming that Mr. Rees is referring to a four-man minimum staffing level since the fire department is already at a four-man shift. So I prepared another breakdown of overtime expenses, this time taking into consideration Mr. Rees's proposed four-man minimum staffing levels. The breakdown shows that even with four-man shift and a four-man minimum staffing levels, it will cost a minimum of $333,058 in overtime for 2023. There'll be a minimum of 6,528 hours that will need to be filled by utilizing overtime at an average hourly rate of $51 an hour. That's everyone's time off. If four-man shift with a four-man minimum, anytime anybody takes time off, that will create overtime. The majority of these hours could be worked by new firefighters making $18 an hour. The savings is still there with a four-man minimum if you were to hire additional firefighters. I am in no way suggesting that the city should even consider a four-man minimum, but if that's a direction to choose, it still makes financial sense to hire additional firefighters in lieu of paying exorbitant hazard pay and overtime costs. Moreover, if it's decided that the city must maintain a five-man minimum staffing level, you'll have set the groundwork for that situation. It's time to separate the people from the problem. The problem is that the city needs to find a way to provide services to the city of Augsburg in the most cost-effective way possible. All things being equal, there would not be a whole lot of discussion whether or not you were going to hire four additional personnel if it was in any other department, and it was going to be a cost-saving measure. But because you have an issue with the people, you're letting that influence your judgment to make the best possible decision for the residents of Augsburg. I've worked for the city for the past 35 years. I owe everything that I have to this city. They hired me as a 23-year-old kid with no college education and gave me the best job that anyone could ever ask for. I've always tried to do what was right, and I've always tried to do what was in the best interest for the city of Augsburg, and I continue to do that now. You're in an enviable position. You have the ability to create jobs in the city of Augsburg and at the same time reduce the overall operating expenses at the fire department. Everyone wins. The residents get a better staff fire department, you're creating jobs, and the overall budget is reduced. You've all heard and used a proverbial kicking the can down the road. In this instance, that can's full of money. And the longer you wait to hire additional firefighters, the farther you kick that can down the road. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
And that brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number twenty-three dash 2022 in the amount of $664,330.50 and library warrant number twenty-three dash 2022, the amount of $0. Capital fund warrant number twenty-three dash 2022, the amount of $5,453.75 and community development fund warrant number twenty-three dash 2022, the amount of $0. And community renewal fund warrant number twenty-three dash 2022, the amount of $0. As audited, B and the same hereby are ordered paid. I sum up.
I'll say that.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight. Our first item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
A local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three C.
I will move that.
Second.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Dillaba?
No.
Councillor Fisher?
No.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
No.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Denied.
Approved.
Approved. That was four.
Approved.
You need five.
No, it's sixty.
No. Requires five.
Sixty percent, so you only need four. Am I right or no?
She had the note that it requires five to approve.
That's unfortunate.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
A resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the interim city manager to hold a public auction.
I'll move it.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
A resolution to amend the 2023 preliminary general fund budget, which was accepted by city council at the November tenth-
A resolution to amend the 2023 preliminary general fund budget, which was accepted by city council at the November 10th special city council meeting.
I'll move that.
Second.
So maybe just to set out the conversation, set the tone for the conversation, especially in light of the council's decision not to approve the resolution to exceed the tax cap, it is my strong recommendation that you do adopt some form of an amended preliminary budget that is not the final budget but will replace what is currently adopted that has a 12% tax increase proposed. At this time, that budget is in conflict with the determination council has made not to override the tax cap. I'm not suggesting that that is the end-all, be-all budget, but I do strongly encourage council to consider it for discussion.
Yeah, I mean I-
Give an overview for the public as to what the amended looks like, Andrea.
So the amended budget takes into consideration the feedback that I received, staff received, from the council throughout the various work sessions. This is the preliminary, this is the amendment that would have been addressed by council on December 5th, excuse me, had that meeting not been canceled and does not take into consideration any of the requests for outside agencies. So ultimately, this increases sales tax from the recommended staff number of 2.5 million to 2.7 million. It decreases property tax. Again, that had a 12% increase in property tax, so it's decreasing property tax by 345,000 round numbers. It does add back in the pool. It does increase the amount of interfund transfers from water and sewer. It also does add back in four police officers in the police department. It adds back in the two retirement positions in DPW. That's largely the changes at a high level, other than some minor changes.
See, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote to accept that. I think we should work on it now, just, you know.
Can she finish? Can she finish her presentation?
I think she did. Did you finish? Oh, you did.
That's fine. That's, that's the high level over you.
Yeah, so we basically vote on this and then before you adopt it, that's when you make the changes, like the changes that you listed in the resolution.
Yeah, but we don't need to vote on anything to change it right now. We continue this, the tally as we go, and then we vote on it at the end. So no, you're just taking in another resolution vote to solidify something that is going to be stuck in there no matter what, and you can't get it back out till-
If you don't accept this, and it doesn't get adopted, we're back to the 12% increase and you just conflicted with the resolution that you just voted against. It just, none of it's making sense. You might as well just take this budget and then we work on it before the next resolution. That's, that's the order of things. I mean, anything else is just, I'm beside myself. I'm beside myself.
This is, all this is, all this is is a resolution with some proposed amendments that we need to add more amendments.
And that's what the next resolution's for. This one keeps you below that 2% right now.
3.8. I think we should work on it from this right here, or maybe the resolutions are in the wrong order. I don't know. Maybe this isn't necessary.
So, council, if I may, so my concern at this point is the approved budget that council has adopted, the preliminary budget. It is on our website right now. You adopted it on November 10th. It is in conflict with the requirement that we be within the tax cap. Council just defeated a resolution to exceed the tax cap. This is my primary concern for council at this time, and I am asking you to consider this resolution to replace the preliminary budget that you have already adopted, not that this become your final budget, that you simply replace the preliminary budget that is on our website that you adopted on November 10th to be in concert with state law that is within the tax cap. Following that resolution, I also have on your agenda this evening that you can, you can work through additional amendments and you can approve a final budget if you get to that point. But you don't need to. You can work through things. You can make changes. My concern is that at this point, the 12% tax increase is your default budget. So if you fail as a council to come to any other agreement, that 12% increase in property tax alone will jeopardize your state aid and will put the city in crisis, quite frankly.
Bigger crisis than we're already in.
I think we need to work through the amendments and we'll be below, I mean, maybe we won't be below, it will be how it turns out.
Right after we accept this. You're, you're right. Right after we accept this. I mean, that's what this is for, to keep us legit. If, if you don't accept this right now, after that last vote, the city's just, we're doing, we're, we're not doing, we are doing at this point.
So this would become the default, this would become the default budget.
This would be the default. That would be the-
Which I don't agree with, so why would I accept it?
Right, but we don't agree with the other one.
You're, so you're saying I'd rather have the 12% than the less than 2%?
No, I'm not saying that. There's a lot of other things-
This is the new starting point, she's saying. Instead of that 12%, we made all these changes. Came here, spent hours talking about adding this, taking away that, the whole nine years. And, and so here's the changes. So this is the new default starting point. Otherwise, otherwise, we're going back to that 12%. I mean, and then we take this and we work on more amendments. That's what the next resolution is for.
We can, we can amend right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can go back and do the local law to go over 2% in special meeting. I mean, we've had the public hearing on it, so we can, we can visit again if we don't come to 1%. Budget that meets that.
I'm not sure that that's true. I have to look into that because it was clearly defeated by council, so it can't-
Andrew, if I may, if one member that voted against that resolution were to change their vote, it's my understanding that it could be brought back.
Well, no, what Kathy's saying is that if one member who voted no brought the resolution back up, then it could be brought to the table again, but it can't be brought to the table by someone who voted in favor of it.
That is correct. That's my understanding of it, without researching it.
No, we've, we've gone over that a couple of times in other issues here.
So, I guess we're gonna vote to accept this or not accept it?
I'd like to work on it.
Right, I'd like to, I would rather accept this because these are changes we already want to make.
No, they aren't.
Well, these are all things we've discussed.
These are all things we discussed in budget hearings.
Kathy, has it been moved?
You and Steve, Dan, myself, Bill.
Moved and seconded.
It was moved and seconded. So, I mean-
It's either a vote or a motion to table or a motion to amend further.
Or we can amend, right? Or amend.
That's correct.
So I'd make, I, I guess, can you talk about the elephant in the room? Is that possible?
Can you describe that elephant?
Is that confidential? There's only one elephant in the room.
I've, oh, okay, your definition elephant and mine are two different things.
Can you talk about the decision?
Why, why, why bring that up when, when we, we need to, we need to continue moving and modifications? We simply accept this and we continue to roll in the fashion in which we did in workshops.
Yes.
If the council wants to do a roll call, you can do that, or?
Do you want to table it and go through and revise?
If you vote no on this, you're back to the 12%, and it's like we didn't even have a workshop.
We're not though, because you've got until the 20th to change it all. So we're not back to that. You're smoking, you're just smoking.
That's why we're here tonight. We accept this and then we make more changes. And you can change any of this you want.
I know.
So, but that's right after this. But I would say first thing we need to do is start at that 2% or less. Otherwise, we're right back at 12%. What are we, what are we?
Are you allowed to talk about the arbitrator's decision? That's the elephant I'm talking about. It impacts the budget. Is that not public yet?
I'm, I'm, I think if council wants it to be public, you can-
But it doesn't impact this one yet. What it impacts is the next one, the next resolution. Because after we accept this, then we make changes to this. But without accepting this, you can't make changes to it.
Am I allowed to talk about that, or is that a confidential thing still?
Well, the information that we talked about in executive session came in a fashion with the confidential moniker on it.
Well, I guess it comes down to, was it on the news?
I don't know.
It comes down to whether or not you're willing to release it.
Not yet. I did not give any information to the media. I specifically asked for the executive session to discuss that.
Do both parties have it? Is there any reason for it to be confidential?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, really. I mean, it's going to be public information here shortly. The fact of the matter is, are we going to move this resolution? We going to table it? Are we going to go to the next one then talk about it?
I'd make an amendment. I would like to offer amendments, but I think it's relevant, our present situation.
If you would like to discuss that, that's up to you.
I personally think we should go through the agenda, have a special meeting, go right back to square one on the budget, the circumstances that have occurred.
So I would, I would offer an amendment not to fill the two vacant retirement positions at the Department of Public Works.
It has nothing to do with the general budget, or very little.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about increasing sewer fees by 25%. Those same people are paying for it.
Not in this resolution. Not in this resolution.
Yes, it is.
It were, show me. It's in a different resolution. It's a different budget.
You just said, you just said those two positions were free, is what you said, and I'm, I'm trying to make the point that they aren't free. That comes out of the sewer and the water fund and, and the budget calls for a 25% increase, so it's not free. And in light of our present situation, we need to, we need to do some reductions here, and I'm, and I'm, that's the proposal I'm making.
I'll second it. But I don't know if we can inside of motion, it's already-
What's the amendment?
You know what I mean?
To remove the two DPW that are also being paid for by water and sewer.
So are we discussing, are we, is this a workshop now? Because if it is, I mean, I've, I've got some things I'd like to add, I guess, but I was going to wait till later to decorum through the agenda, but, you know, I mean, this, this could be a simple resolution on the table that we can move and have our discussions. I just want to know where we're at, I guess.
Why wouldn't you do that after we accept this one?
What do you want me to do? Then the next one says to adopt. You want me?
Then you vote no.
That's when we do all the changes.
I don't want that to be the default budget, though.
You're already, we're, we're already there.
We're not already there, mighty. On the 20th of December, we will be there.
I mean, there's things that I don't agree with as well, but-
We didn't accept the tax levy.
That's what the next resolution is for. But right now-
I don't want, Dan, Dan, I don't-
And that's what this does.
And I don't want that to be the default budget. So if we fail to act, we fail to make difficult decisions, then this is automatically going to be the default budget. And there's things in it that I don't agree with. I'll make a motion to table.
We got amendments all over the place.
Kathy, we gotta go to the first one first and then the second one, like, what?
I, I, I'm not debating that, Steve. I, I just, you know, we're, we're throwing them all over the place.
So we have two motions and two seconds on the floor, just making sure I understand. And then there was a motion to table. And a second.
I missed the second on the motion to table.
Yeah, I don't think there was a second.
Okay, so.
So Kathy, would you call-
Steve seconded it, actually.
Yes, he did. I believe, I thought he did.
Counselor Fisher made the motion to table.
Yes, I seconded.
So the second was Counselor Dillaba?
Kathy, would you call the roll?
So the first motion that council will be voting on is a motion by Counselor Reese to amend, not to amend the resolution to not fill the two vacant positions at DPW. It was seconded by Counselor Fisher. This is a motion to amend.
So are you going to keep that in lieu of the fact that we're going to table the entire resolution for another day? Because it makes no sense to keep voting on amendments if we're going to table the whole.
So we're going to do the amendments under item number three then?
Well, if you're gonna, I don't know why we're going to amend a document that we're going to table. It makes no sense. You should-
Okay, I'll pull it.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm saying. It doesn't make sense to vote to amend something that we're in turn going to table and there's going to be no action.
That's fine. Kathy, we've all-
So this is the motion by Counselor Fisher to table with a second by Counselor Dillaba. Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
I'm sorry, this is the table?
This is a motion by Counselor Fisher to table with a second by Counselor Dillaba.
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Tabled.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Andrea's already-
No. I think that's-
You don't even introduce it.
We don't even introduce it, as well as the next two, as well.
You don't need to even introduce the next one or the sewer or the water.
Yep. The next three.
Four, five, and six?
Yeah, there's no need for them, those two.
No.
It was bringing to bill 119.
Round 119, correct?
I thought we were going to take up a resolution to adopt and do amendments. That was my understanding.
You just tabled it!
No, I didn't. I don't-
You did. You just had the resolution right there. And, and without that, you cannot move on to the next one. That's what we've been trying to explain.
We're trying to explain.
Without accepting that, you cannot move on to the next one where we make the amendments.
Why can't?
That's a special workshop.
No, it's not.
No, it's not a special workshop. I believe it falls into law, state law.
What law is that exactly?
There's nothing-
I'm trying to cite Andrea from earlier. I may be mistaken, but-
Dan, there's nothing, and I've never seen it in all the years of city government, that says you have to accept these recommendations in order to move forward. What you do is you bring up a resolution to adopt. We have recommendations and we've made some decisions. We continue the process now and we continue it tonight.
It's written in the charter. Council shall accept.
We already have accepted it.
The 12% one.
That's right.
Why wouldn't you substitute it with the 2% one, especially in light of that?
Because I don't like the 2% one yet, and I want to make it better.
That's what the next resolution is for. That's the one you table if we don't come to an agreement.
No, Dan, you're wrong.
Oh.
So-
It sounds like we need to-
15 years.
So could we please move on to item four? And, and, and have that read and a motion made to- Yes, there is.
So why would you move the city all of a sudden back to the $3.2 million deficit rather than the $1 million deficit or whatever it is? I, I just don't even get it. It's what you just voted for, to move us back to the $3.5 million deficit.
No, we're working off of this still.
We're not, because you just voted against it. So we're right back to the original. Steve Jelly, well, sorry, no, because it was revised.
Anything I've ever seen, that you bring up, the budget, the budget to adopt, which is the one the city manager has submitted, and then we start talking about what we've discussed in workshops but have not formally adopted yet.
Every single year I've been on council.
I've never seen it done this-
We changed the preliminary budget so, so that if there is a default, it, it falls back to a changed preliminary, not the original. After the workshops. And usually we do it during the council meetings after the workshops. We're going to make these changes now, boom. Next work, work session, we make these changes now, boom. And then when it comes time for this meeting, we have the final preliminary budget that we accept, and then we make our final changes to lower it even more if we can. And, and, and that's the way it goes, and that's, that's the way it was set up here, just like every year.
Could I introduce bill number 118, please, resolution to adopt and- Could I introduce Bill number one eighteen, please? Resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget. Is there a second in there?
If you vote no, it goes back to the twelve percent.
I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing it for discussion purposes, no.
They might not even get to vote. I'll second it.
This is huge.
All we're doing is discussing it, you know, if you just, you know.
Yeah.
We've already discussed it. We've discussed it for weeks.
There was a motion and it was just seconded.
Okay.
So now it goes to discussion. And then you, if you wanna not vote on it, that's fine, too.
Bill number one eighteen is a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget.
I'll move that for discussion purposes. Second, again.
Are you gonna amend it to, do you wanna amend the resolution to say a resolution to discuss the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget because the resolution calls to adopt?
I'm moving it for discussion purposes. And for the purpose of going through what we've worked on today, and, and we're gonna need to do more work. I'm not adopting the old one, if that's what you're concerned about. Don't, don't get me wrong.
I don't even know which one we're talking about now.
This is just crazy. I'm, I'm telling you right now, this is as crazy as it gets right now. This is.
Are you waiting for me to read them? I don't actually know.
Been moved and seconded, and we're just waiting for a roll call, I guess.
A roll call for what?
Discuss it.
To discuss it.
Well, we don't need a roll call. Introduced that he seconded it, you don't need a roll call to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we just bring it, why don't we table the next three and bring it up under items for discussion? And then just pick up where we left off through the multiple workshops and everything else that we've done to discuss the budget and produce additional cuts if necessary.
Are we at the point?
And maybe talk about the elephant in the room.
You could best thing.
Are we at the point now where we're gonna start working on the, the budget amendments?
We already, we already did, and you just voted to table it. That's what I'm not getting.
Bill number one eighteen is a resolution to adopt the preliminary budget, the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget. If you'd like to discuss it, this is what you would do now. Or if you'd like to table that, you could now do that. It has been moved and seconded. But if you voted to approve this, you would be adopting the twelve percent increase. Just to be clear, for the record.
Yeah, I'm not voting to approve it. I, I brought it up for discussion purposes. I mean, maybe these things weren't written right, you know? I, I don't know, but.
I don't think that's true, Counselor.
Be nice if we had a lawyer in the room.
So.
You can't vote yes or no on this right now.
You can't do anything with that.
Want to. That's gonna be a heavy burden to bear for anybody.
Do you guys wish to go forward and vote on it?
So there wasn't.
I can't imagine state aid we're gonna lose. It just. We're doing this out of order.
So maybe there should have been a resolution on there to discuss amendments to the.
That's why we have items for discussion.
Well, you can't do it, you can't accept the other ones.
He doesn't want that to be our fault.
I don't want that to be our default budget.
Counselor, if I may, the resolution to, which has been tabled, to adopt the preliminary budget. Like any other resolution that you all have approved or defeated in the past, once it has been moved and seconded, is up for discussion. And could have been amended in any way you see fit. At this point in the evening, I would recommend tabling the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three budget. And moving on, beginning with Bill. Number one nineteen.
Yes.
One nineteen.
Readdress the issues under Bill number one twenty-one. Where you have presented a proposal to amend the preliminary budget. If at that point you would like to discuss amendments to what you have provided in the agenda. To align with what you have presented everybody with this evening, or any other thoughts that you or the majority of council have. That would be the appropriate time to do it at this juncture in the meeting tonight.
But we could also do amendments right now, but.
Sure, you may. And if you adopt it, you would be adopting that as your final budget. So please take that word with caution.
All right. I'm happy to discuss it under my proposal. I think that'd be fine.
If this needs to be tabled, then we need to wait.
Then, then we're table on this?
That'd be fine.
Table this right now. This is crazy.
You need to table this and then not act on the other two.
This needs to be tabled, and then bring the other one off the table when we discuss your amendments.
Make a motion to table it.
I, I motion to table this resolution.
I'll second it. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Powers?
To table this motion, Bill number one eighteen, correct?
You are correct, sir. To table.
Yes.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Counsel Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Tabled.
No need to even bring up the next two, which are water and sewer. Those are typically addressed after you adopt a general fund budget. So my recommendation is to move to Bill number one nineteen.
Do they need to be tabled, or can we just skip?
No, you can just skip them.
You can't. I've never heard of that before.
Yeah, if you just don't act on them, as long as you don't, as long as you don't introduce them in first and second, you can just let them go.
Okay.
We're on item number seven. Our next item, this will be read by Intron City Manager, Andrew Smith.
So a resolution to call for a special city council meeting on Wednesday, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. At City Hall, City Council Chambers, Augsburg, New York.
Um.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you?
Um, I just see there's no option for, um.
That's correct.
Is that them?
This meeting is really for the, a purpose of establishing the consent agenda and then calling for and holding some public hearings that are necessary to keep things moving along. As it pertains to the lease of city-owned property, and then it's getting us set up for code changes in January at our first regular meeting on the ninth.
Okay.
And then doing all of our year-end items, appointments, that we took off of this meeting to allow you adequate time to discuss the budget.
I'd like to just make one quick comment on it. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm remote, I'll be remote at my personal address. I'll let Kathy know that, for the record.
Thank you.
Kathy, if we're remote, can we list two addresses, or does it, can we all?
It's my understanding that it has to be the address you will be physically present at.
But can we list both and then let them know which address we're at when we get closer, or no?
It's my understanding it has to be on the agenda because the public has the right to attend it either, so it has to be when the agenda goes out.
But I can let you know when the agenda, like, when you actually release it.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Intron City Manager, Andrew Smith.
Resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance to lease municipal property at three thirty, Fourth Street. Basement for the satellite office of U S Congresswoman Elise Stefanic.
I'll move that.
I'll move that.
This public hearing would be held on the twenty-eighth at six P M.
Do we have two moves?
I'll, I'll second it, so there's an actual first and a second. I've set up two firsts.
Kathy, would you please follow the roll?
Counsel Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Approved.
So do we want to get to a work session?
No, we're gonna. We're gonna discuss it under.
Right here.
Item nine.
And so I'm gonna do, if we finish through and then do the work session, whole business, new business? Or do we want to start the work session now?
Well, it's not really a work session. It's more.
No.
You wanna introduce the resolution?
Yeah.
And then.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then you can have discussions upon that, but you can't, it's not really a work session. It's. Discussing.
It's a resolution to amend.
Right.
I'll second it.
That's what the other one should have been, but I'm not gonna argue about that.
No, that's, that's what we do, is. Keep it going right there, and we should take it off the table, and combine it with this.
Bill number one seventeen was a resolution to amend the preliminary budget, just for the sake of clarity.
Well, Bill twenty-one twenty-one kind of follows the same suit, so if there's a motion in a second, so.
It hasn't yet been introduced.
I haven't heard it introduced. If, if Counsel Reese, if it's your intention to introduce that, then I will.
I'll introduce it. A resolution to amend the City of Augsburg preliminary budget.
I just need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Uh, no discussion?
No, it's discussed.
But is it, so we're mending this is.
Well, if.
This budget are we mending because we've only.
There's only.
Why don't, it's Counsel Reese's.
Let, let the maker of the motion, the resolution, discuss it. Sorry, sorry, Nicole. I gotta delay here.
So, it's fine.
So this, this is, uh, well, I guess technically what's on the agenda is different from what I've got here. Um, I don't know how we make these changes. Um, but anyways, uh, so this is a revised proposed amendment. Um, and it keeps.
This, this is the one you have, has been moved and seconded, the one that was with the agenda.
Right, so you would have to.
That is correct.
So this is the one that you're having to introduce and have done.
So if you wanted to do something with the one that you brought tonight, you would have to make a motion to get amendments approved.
So I would make a motion to. Uh, amend the draft and go with this revised one that's been handed out. And I can explain that. Um, so it keeps the tax rate below the two percent. Um, it adds back in from the original one that was submitted on the, on the budget. The three hundred thousand I had taken out in inter-fund revenues and sales tax and use tax, which is also in Andrea's budget. It basically consolidates everything that we talked about and that staff has had on their budget, but it does have some changes. Um, and it takes out the pool. It has a five-man minimum at the fire department. And, uh, which is the arbitrator's decision, so, but I figured that ahead of time, so, um, that is in there. Um, so I would make a motion to move that for, uh, to amend it.
So are you gonna read that in its entirety, just so for the public, or no?
What's that?
Did, did you, did you just read this in its entirety, amended one?
In its entirety?
Well, I just think if they don't have it, we should read it.
Well, it's an amendment, though.
Looks like you're removing four police officers.
No. No, Matt, it adds four police officers.
So you're, so did you read the note part on the bottom? Is that what you read? That you're?
The attached proposed budget amendments demonstrate that we do have the ability to balance the two thousand twenty-three city budget with slightly less proposed increases in taxes and fees, significantly less. This budget resolution holds the tax increase below the two percent state tax cap and reduces the proposed increase in sewer rates by fifty percent. It also restores four police officer positions that were proposed to be cut, but closes the city pool.
So this does have a deficit, if I'm reading this page correctly, Counselor, so you do have to get, before you can adopt this, you need to get to zero.
No, just like your budget, I mean, you had a deficit of four hundred and some thousand that you proposed to take out of fund balance, so this is less, is significantly less. It's. Two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, which I would propose to. We can either do through taxes, or we can do it through fund balance, or we can do it through both.
Well, if you're going to, uh, and if you're going to adopt this as the new preliminary budget, you will have to. Particularly, whether that is gonna be split, half of that difference is gonna come from general fund, half is gonna be made up by.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work through the whole thing. I don't know why everybody's so jumpy. I mean, let's, let's talk about it.
Because we did. Alrighty.
Mayor, if I may, I have yet to hear a second on Counsel Reese's motion to amend, to present what he just entered. I just need a second. You're discussing it, and we should have a second. Thank you, Counselor.
Who's second on it?
Counsel Dillabaugh.
So is everybody, uh, do, do you wanna discuss it farther, or I, I, I guess you need to take a roll call on the amendment.
Is that what you'd like me to do, Mayor?
Yes.
So this is a vote to amend. Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counsel Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
So this is just to be able to talk about the amended document, correct?
Yes.
This is to amend. It already had, it was already moved and seconded and open for discussion. Counsel Reese has now made a motion to amend it to be the document that he submitted tonight and just reviewed. And Counsel Dillabaugh seconded it. So you're voting to amend. You're not voting on the actual resolution.
To discuss the amendment, it's fine.
So your answer is yes?
Yes.
This is to actually.
We're not actually.
Amend the resolution, just to be clear. It's not to amend the preliminary budget. It is to amend the resolution.
Just to amend this, because he brought this paper into me.
Correct. You are correct.
That's fine, yes.
Can, can you please, can you please read the amendment in for me?
Counsel Reese made a motion to amend the resolution to be what he presented to council this evening in person, which I believe did get forwarded to you. Uh, which did have changes from what was actually presented with the agenda, and he described them on the high points. I understood.
So, okay, um. But this, this, this doesn't. Stop anything from going forward as far as any other amendments or, or talking about the preliminary budget. So this is just basically, i- is this the end of all your amendments, John, to the preliminary budget, I guess?
No, this is for discussion. We get, we have to have something to work from, so it's for discussion.
Oh, we were doing that with one eighteen.
Yeah, so. This is, we're not actually voting on the resolution to amend.
We're nowhere.
Okay, yes.
No, we are, right? We're just voting to.
You are voting, you are voting to amend the resolution that was introduced by Counsel Fisher and seconded by, I'm sorry.
I don't even know where my.
We're, we're, all we're doing is voting to amend the resolution so we can talk about it, so we're all on the same page.
But we're not actually voting to amend.
Fisher and seconded by Counsel Dillabaugh. And then a motion by Counsel Reese to amend that was seconded by Counsel Dillabaugh. So you are voting to amend the resolution that was.
So we're just amending the resolution. I'm not actually voting on.
That's all we're doing.
The resolution. You are not voting to amend the preliminary budget. You are only voting to amend the resolution.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
So your answer is yes?
So we get for discussion purposes, but it's.
Counsel Powers?
I feel like.
Yes, yes.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperley?
No.
Approved.
Okay. So. Let's.
So we wanna adopt this now?
Well.
Um. So. You wanna go through it line by line or?
Sure.
Well, that's kind of.
It's your resolution, man. Run with it.
It's, it's nice to see the decrease in the sales tax. So you let him hear it. I, I think it's good.
Okay, so, so, um. As, as far as revenues for real property taxes, it's the same as staff's, uh. Um, that we talked about is below the two percent limit. The outside user fees have been decreased. We would take a hundred and sixty-five thousand each out of the water and sewer funds for new revenue. We would increase staff's, uh, projection for sales tax by two hundred thousand. The other, the next, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh. Items were all discussed in the workshop. I'm proposing to take out five thousand hours in office spends out of the council's budget. You wanna vote on these individually?
No, I don't think we need to. I, I think, I mean, why are we gonna vote on them when we're, we're gonna have further discussions going forward? I mean, these are your, these are your recommendations, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, we can make, we can all make notes of them and then incorporate them in our final discussion.
Is that right with everybody, or should we, or do you wanna discuss these individually and vote on them, or?
So that's what we're doing with the resolution that got tabled. The first one.
Are you still on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I'm proposing that the city manager's salary line be decreased from a hundred and twenty-five thousand down to a hundred and fifteen thousand, saving ten thousand dollars. Uh, the next two line items are dealing with the assessor were, um. Part of the, uh. Staff's budget. Um, I'm proposing that we reduce, um, our legal expenses by twenty-five thousand dollars. Going from a hundred and seventy-five thousand hour original budget to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um. Central services telephone is being reduced by ten thousand. That's five thousand, uh, more than what was in the staff's budget. The next one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items. Um, were all part of, uh, staff's budget. I am proposing to re- reduce, uh, the police equipment maintenance line by thirty thousand from eighty-five-five down to fifty-five thousand.
Based on what?
Uh, I think it was based on. I think it was based on, uh, what they had spent to date or something.
Well, spent to date, sir. Um.
Yeah, but we need to find some savings here, so I, this. Okay.
This is what we spend out of it. Um. I know most of these things are electronic systems, um, they're. The biggest thing is that tax on twenty-six thousand dollar bill. That's our body cams and our casers. That's a yearly piece, is what that is for all of the equipment. That comes from October, that one you probably haven't been to see for year to date.
Yeah, I think I caught that the first time we went over this.
Yeah, that comes in, that's a late October bill.
Thank you.
But yeah, I wrote that down, um, and then, or.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm also proposing to reduce, uh, police overtime by fifty thousand from two hundred and seventy thousand down to two hundred and twenty thousand in light of the fact that this restores four police officer positions. Uh, I think all the line items that are in the fire department, uh, are, are the same that are in staff's budget, including the five man minimum and increased social security expenses. I think I'm reducing their building maintenance line by five thousand dollars and DPW's equipment maintenance line by twenty thousand from a hundred and twenty down to a hundred thousand. The parks line was, um, incorporated or part of staff's budget. Unfortunately, yeah, the pool, um, is, is not in there. And, um, I took out what was originally in there for consultants for the planning line. And the reduction to St. Lawrence County CDP was in, uh, staff's budget. So all these changes, um. Result in a deficit of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, and I would propose that that would, um. Come out of fund balance, but you guys can. We can talk about that. So that's the summary. Um. Thoughts, or anybody wanna discuss any particular lines or?
I don't like, uh, taking money from, uh. Water fund. Sewer fund. I don't like creating these higher numbers to make it look like a problem solved and. I mean, staff knows best on these numbers. Staff work hard. These are numbers. And I. I don't agree with.
I, I think, uh, there are some impacts. I, I, I know that staff did have an opportunity to look at the initial, uh, proposal. This is different. I understand that. But I know there were some concerns that were presented, and I think it would be prudent to listen to, uh, police, fire, DPW, planning just to understand the implications of of the reductions that are being proposed by Counselor Reese. So if it's okay, we can start with Police Chief. I know who's it, ju- just for the benefit of everybody attending remotely, I think it'd be best. If the comments are all issued from the podium, that way they can be heard by anybody attending remotely.
Agreed, and Counsel Powers needs to be able to hear them.
If that's okay with, with you, Mayor.
So, I mean, just you look at equipment maintenance for the police and fifty-five thousand dollars is taken out. This amendment, but, but Police Chief gives us paper showing that.
Right, which is why she's, why she's saying let each department head to come up to the podium. She's asking if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so we'll start with the Police Chief followed by Fire, followed by DPW. And then I'll, uh.
End it out with planning.
I'll close it out with planning.
So essentially that equipment maintenance line item, um, that four forty line, that's the the heart and soul of our budget besides our salary, um, to, for our manpower. Uh, that basically pays for ninety percent of, of what we do. Um, the, the handout I gave everyone, the Lexipol system, that is our policy maker system. Uh, we dumped a lot of money into that. Um. It was about sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty, and now we pay this yearly fee of this eighty-seven hundred. And anytime there's a, a court case out there where there's a court decision or the governor's office makes a, uh, a mandate, um, which frankly, uh, no one has the time to stay on top of all of this. This is what we pay Lexipol to do. It automatically updates our policies, um, so we're in compliance with the, the state and federal government at all times. Um, prior to having Lexipol, our policies weren't in compliance. Um, the last time they were is nineteen ninety-six, so that's why we pay them the eighty-seven hundred dollars. Calio is a recording system. Um, we use it for narcotics buys. It's also used for controlled phone calls. Um, our last several, um.
So you're saying that we can't, you're saying that we can't go any lower than eighty-five. We can't go to eighty thousand. We can't do anything with that?
Well, if you went to eighty thousand, that would be the actual budget. That's set, take seventy-nine thousand just to pay the bills. So we went to eighty. There's no extra money in there else. And I say extra because that's, uh. Just routine repair and maintenance this year costs eight thousand dollars. I didn't have any major breakdowns in the cars, knock on wood. That's not the, the time when a car needs all brakes and rotors, and that's a twelve hundred dollar bill. Luckily with this lease program, um, I got fairly new vehicles. I have several older vehicles, and the time's gonna come and they're gonna need some significant repair bills. So by only having that fifty-nine hundred dollars, um, extra or surplus in the, um, that line item. We're talking fifty-nine hundred dollars. It's, that can be ate up pretty quickly. Um. For example, even our generator, that went up last year, and that is the only generator in the city that runs an entire building. And again, our police department is the central command post for the entire city when there's a major disaster, so. Having about six thousand dollar surplus in an equipment maintenance line for any major department is not, is not a lot of surplus.
Well, we're gonna have to find some savings somewhere, and it's gonna, it's gonna start involving personnel, so I, I, you know, I don't know what to do.
I, I, and I, when I present, I understand that, and I appreciate your efforts. I, I truly do. Um. I, when I first presented a budget to you a couple of years ago, I was gonna make a significant cut to this line item. Um, and then we were forced into the body cam program, and that's where this twenty-six thousand dollar bill came from. This line item would, would have been twenty-six thousand dollars cheaper. But this is, this is where we're at.
Can we go with eighty thousand?
Then that leaves ten dollars to fix something.
Yeah.
Ten bucks.
Yeah, I, I can't recommend that. I mean, and, and then I have one major breakdown and.
Can you go back and find the fifty-five thousand for us, son? So we don't, it doesn't, that's so it doesn't come down to a body? There, you're mad.
I think he spent over the numbers.
Well, I don't think there's, you're never done with the numbers. So, take another look.
Oh, I. I honestly, I, I can't. There, I've been through this budget time and time and time again. I mean, if you're putting me on the spot between that, I can't pay the bills if you pull it from here. There's not a, there's five thousand dollars there.
Okay.
Let me ask you.
You go back and find anything else, and this is it. This is what you're telling me? This is your budget? There's no more wiggle room? You, you're not willing to drop anything else down? I have no wiggle room. Okay. I. That's fine. Thank you, sir.
Let me, let me, uh, let me drop something here, uh, that I planned on using later in resolution one eighteen. What are the, what, Andrea, I, I know it was discussed at one point, but, um, seeing that we're in the weeds here. Um. As far as the, the code enforcement office and the ability to quickly train some of our firefighters to take on some of that code enforcement, can we actually pull code enforcement from from the budget temporarily for a year and maybe even engineering? And use engineering on your behalf as needed through the consultant line possibly?
I'm sure that anyone'd agree to that.
Well, right, so I think the, and may, maybe the Fire Chief, um, has a comment here, but I think the comment you're referring to that I made at a budget work session is if it is the perspective of council to add back in the various positions that were cut. Um, that you will likely either have to increase the amount of funding coming out of the fund balance and, and/or look at eliminating other departments as a whole, um, including planning, engineering, and possibly code enforcement, because all of those departments have a share of their budget expenses that go towards the work done in water and sewer specifically. So you really need to look at significant cuts, and we're talking about departments that have one and two people in them, so you, there isn't really anywhere to cut back. It's really the full elimination of the department. Uh, and you have to look at some combination of those three or all three in order to get the same level of benefit um, that you get from eliminating other positions in other departments that don't have an, uh. That don't do as much in water and sewer. So. But my caution to you when I made that statement at the work session is that the city administration has not prepared the council and the community to do that starting January one. So those are options for you, but should you choose that, um, you will be putting the city in a bad position in terms of being able to meet your requirements for permits that are issued through the engineering department, for example, that are related to water and sewer reporting, um, on your grants. It, uh, it affects the revenue that is associated with uh, building permits being issued as well as rental inspections that are done through code enforcement. Um, and it does require that if you're going to transfer those duties to the fire department, while they may have the credentials to do it, you would have to negotiate those additional duties, and that would likely come at a cost, and I don't know what that cost is. I think that regardless of what you do in this year's budget, those all have to be on the table for your budget in twenty twenty-four. Um, especially if you're looking to take the amount of general fund that the, that the proposed amendment, um. Takes, takes out of the fund balance, excuse me, so. Putting you in a much more difficult position to start off your budgeting process for twenty twenty-four. So. I think that those are tasks that need to be started January one if council feels like that is something you really want to consider uh, abolishing in twenty twenty-four, just in terms of working with the staff in those departments and working with the union to get them to agree to and understand the costs that it would cost, that it would take to transfer the code enforcement positions and jobs specifically to the fire department.
Thank you, Andrea.
There is a significant, um, clerical error, um, on here that is going to save you over thirty thousand dollars, um, that, that should be noted. Um, on your line thirty-one, twenty-five, fifty, that says uniforms and clothing. Um, that line item was never twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that dollar amount actually belongs to uh, materials and supplies, and I caught that on for the December fifth, um, presented budget. Um, uniform and clothing, I originally requested, I believe, five thousand dollars, and for the additional four officers, um, I went over what we need for, for equipment and for vests for, for some of these officers. And frankly, all I need in that line item is seven thousand dollars in total.
That was corrected in your spreadsheet for your December fifth meeting and then carried over to your materials for today that were presented with the initial.
Well, I'm asking for even less than what was presented. I sat down with the administrative aide to that, looking at previous years' academy, uh, costs. Seven thousand would be sufficient for that. Medical expenses as well. Um. Forty-five hundred was enough. We don't need the, um, amended seventy-five hundred, forty-five hundred was sufficient.
And that was uniform and clothing you said was going from fifteen to seven?
Correct. Yeah, so your line five fifty will be seven thousand. And your medical expenses, which is line four-two-one. Forty-five hundred is sufficient for that. And as far as overtime, looking at my year to date, I'm gonna, I came to you in July asking for two seventy-five. I'm going to end the year, uh, at two sixty for overtime. Um. I asked for three hundred in my presentation. I'm willing to do, uh, I think we can work hard and keep it with our raises, come in at two sixty for twenty twenty-three. I, I think two twenty, I don't think is, uh, I understand we gotta to our part and we're doing our part, but I don't think two twenty is, is obtainable, but I think two sixty is.
But just to be clear, that's at what level of staffing?
That's at, with having twenty officers. I mean, the more, more officers you cut, the more overtime has to work to do the same amount of job.
I understand. I just want to be true.
Absolutely.
And you're currently sitting with how many right now?
Um, well, currently I've, I have lost three officers, so I only have seventeen. But I have transfers are awaiting. I just need the word.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I did, uh, Councilor Reish, I didn't get your amended. So obviously because of the elephant in the room, the one thing I won't need to discuss. Uh, the only thing that's changed on your amended one would be the building maintenance line by five thousand dollars. Um, year to date, we're at fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty seven dollars. Um, I have a bill coming in from an overhead door repair. The last overhead door repair was six thousand dollars. Um, I believe twenty thousand dollars is the bare minimum to maintain a sixty year old building. We've been fortunate enough that the compressor, which is also sixty years old and the generator, which is sixty years old, we haven't had to do any work to those. The roof continually leaks in spots. Um, we fix it on occasion. We have a galvanized two inch water line that feeds the apparatus bay that um as of this week is now up to twelve. Fernco um straps on it to cover the leaks. Um, at any point, that whole pipe could go. The last major renovation done to the fire department is important to note. It was about twelve thousand dollars in materials. Provided by the Fireman's Association. The building has had no updates whatsoever in my twenty some years there. Um, twenty thousand dollars was the bare minimum. It was originally forty um when we sat down. All the department heads and the city manager for nine hours on a day, we cut our lines to the bare minimum. And that's where I'm at on that.
I thought you said your the building maintenance was to refurbish some rooms in that.
That's why the additional was in that I already took out of the budget. That was taken out from my original proposal.
You can't do with five thousand less.
Um, I can try, but if the bills come in, they have to be paid. I I don't believe I believe at the end of the year, once I get the overhead door bill. Which should be coming. Um, the Holland pump bill for the Fernco fittings that we just bought this week. Um, this the sewer line is plugged. We fortunately, a couple of the guys today with Jeremiah, who's been great working with us. Um, we think we can fix that leak or that uh plug, but he's not a hundred percent sure. I just I don't believe for a building of that age. With the door problems that we've been having, that twenty thousand dollars is 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 a large amount. You can reduce it. Um, I can't guarantee that at the end of next year that we won't be short by five thousand dollars. And we do ninety percent of the maintenance ourself in house. We 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 have been using Jeremiah lately, but. For the most part, there's no labor cost unless it's something that we absolutely can't fix like the overhead doors. And we actually had a couple of the firefighters spend days trying to figure out the problem on the overhead doors before we even called up state doors.
Yeah. John, I I have a question for Councilor Reish on the uh the health insurance buyout. You're you're suggesting an eight thousand dollar difference.
That came from staff.
That was my recommendation. Yes, so.
That's in the original?
The original that got presented, um, there were a couple errors in it.
I'm sorry, I see it on and I see it in Bill one eighteen. I apologize. My bad. My bad. Okay, thank you.
So one they have in your amendment, you proposed to cut. The uh shop maintenance, equipment maintenance by twenty. I already cut it ten. Uh, and that if you're speaking of cutting the two positions back out. That's gonna be not gonna have to put more people on the street. So that's probably gonna have to come. One of them's gonna have to come out of the shop to maintain services. Also note on that, if you look in your budget, there's a revenue coming in from water and sewer of two hundred and ninety one thousand. So taking that twenty thousand out means general funds putting in about seventeen hundred dollars towards equipment maintenance. It's not a lot. So now if you two decide to take the two bodies from the department that reworked everything, it's gonna add fifty thousand dollars back to the general fund.
And it's good to read, it's good to.
It'll lower water and sewer, yes, but it's gonna add fifty back to the general fund.
Yeah, but we're also twenty five percent increase in sewer rates is what's proposed. I mean, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, everybody acts like it's free when it's coming out of the water and sewer.
I I don't think it's free.
No, I I that's what that's what staff always says.
Not me. I I I think that the allocation that goes to a lot of departments is incorrect. I think more should be left in my department, to be honest with you, because that's where the majority of the work comes from. That's just my personal opinion. But I just that, I mean, the twenty thousand, we're at a hundred to three thousand to today. Besides what was purchased in the last week of that line. That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
So the reduction as proposed to the planning line, which is the consultant line, um. Taking that down to zero, that that line, like many of the others discussed this evening, has been reduced. Um, in the adopted preliminary budget that you all have in front of you. And essentially zeroing that out would mean that you would not have the ability. To.
I think that's a mistake on my part, Andrea. What I meant to do was take out what I had put in that was extra. Was that eighteen thousand five hundred? That was in the original draft.
You wanted to restore that to the consultant line, is it?
I I had proposed to add some.
So that line is the line that covers all of the technical specialist sort of services. So it's. It's the asbestos surveys that we have to do on a building before we can decide whether or not we're gonna do demolition. It's. The environmental site assessments that we have to do, which are the phase one and phase two site assessments that we have to do before. We can apply for a cleanup grant from the EPA. It's. It's any support that we might need if we were putting together. Uh, an infrastructure grant, which we just did to make sure that we had a project listed on the I U P. It's it's engineering largely, um, specialized engineering in support of grant applications or.
Yeah, and I was looking to add to it. Uh, and bring it up by nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. And what I was doing there was showing that it wasn't amended and that there wasn't any impact or is any difference. Perhaps I did that wrong. That's what that's what so it's still at eighteen thousand five hundred. It wasn't amended and there's no difference. That's what I was trying to reflect. But I was adding, I was adding nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to in my original draft. Just to clarify. Cause I thought you needed more consultants to write grants and stuff.
We don't pay consultants to write grants. Um, those are. At this point in time, they have been managed by department heads. Uh, but occasionally we do have to have a very specific. Document in support of that grant in order to meet the threshold criteria. The EPA grant is just a very, it's a perfect example. You can't apply for a cleanup grant unless you have a phase two environmental site assessment. That is something that you have to consult out. There's no one on city staff that has that ability, the ability to do that. So that just happens to be a very good example. It's also one that we recently submitted. But it's services like that, that some staff member can't perform in house and you have to provide. Um, a document, whether it's a preliminary engineering report or an engineer's estimate.
And the reason why I wanted to increase it was so that Dan could write a C D B G or a home or um. The Main Street Pump Station, which were taking eight hundred thousand dollars out of the sewer fund. That could be a grant as well. Um, I know, again, it's coming out of the sewer fund, so it nobody's really paying for it, but. Um.
Oh, everybody's paying.
Yeah.
Everybody that chooses.
I I again, I mean, I I just think that.
Is that reflected correctly then? So the point was to keep it the same at eighteen thousand five hundred? There's no amendment and there's no difference.
Okay.
Um. So how do you wanna proceed? Is everybody okay with council office expenses being dropped by five thousand dollars? I really don't think we need that.
That budget line is specific to your virtual program here. So if you cut that five thousand. You will no longer be able to do the remote through this program. That is kind of important.
And manager salary dropping that by uh. Ten thousand to a hundred and fifteen.
I agree with that one.
And dropping law by twenty five thousand?
Let's get a whole consensus on that. You might not get a manager to work for that, so it's true. So we have two.
I think. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it's a highly paid position and ten thousand dollars. But I also think if we're actively advertising this position. At a hundred and twenty five thousand, we.
Think we are. There's a range there.
I'm just saying, I think before we. Off have offered a position, I think that if you're only prepared to offer that person. That then that need we need to know that going into it that nobody will accept it. Or they may.
Is there a consensus to the caveat?
I think you're right, Mayor. No.
I hope no.
I I think that. We, you know, you you wanna get the best person for the job.
And they do have.
How about law at uh twenty five thousand?
I I'd be happy with that. I don't think we're gonna need as much.
So in the last uh.
I don't know about that either, actually. I I mean. Not to bring up the elephant in the room, but we might be looking at something down the road as far as. This recent uh award as far as uh you can't come to a conclusion on something.
I tallied up almost six hundred grand in legal fees uh over the last two years plus just. So.
Are you proposing to up it?
No, just leave it.
Is there a consensus to leave that? Ian says yes. Is there a consensus to drop it? John wants to drop it.
To leave it at the proposed one seventy five?
So expenses to date in your preliminary budget on page C twelve and to date, I mean, September thirtieth, one fifty or one forty seven five.
Yeah, and and we don't have the kind of litigation that we've we've been going through also, right? A seven calculated in there.
I mean, who knows what's coming?
Well, I think I think we do.
Consensus to leave it?
I think leave it.
So how do we wanna proceed? You wanna just vote this down and?
I think.
We should just table it together.
Vote this down right now. Now, we just learned a few things, okay? We should go back and take off the table. The original uh. Amendment to the preliminary budget, which brings us back around the two percent. We vote yes. Then we take the things that we just learned off of here that we can make changes to. And we we adopt them prior to adopting the actual budget.
So just a point of clarification. If you want to go back to the and untable the resolution that was presented initially to amend. The preliminary budget. You can make amendments to that budget. You could say, just for example. We wanna take, we wanna take the pool out. If there's consensus to do that, you that's in that's listed. In the sheet, you can do that. If you, um, I don't know what other changes. If you want to go to uh from two point five. In sales tax to two point six instead of two point seven, you can make that amendment as well. If there are, if if that is the perspective of council to go back to that, untable it, discuss it, you can make amendments.
Right.
To that as well, so.
So why does uh? Why does this become the default and that this one that says the same thing doesn't become the default?
I'm just I'm just saying whichever one you you uh vote to adopt as the preliminary, as the amendment to the preliminary. There was a question. About going back, so I was just answering the question.
Yeah, but the 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 statement was on item number three. A resolution to amend the tw- two thousand twenty three preliminary general fund budget was that this now became the default.
Well, whatever you, if the council adopted an amendment.
Only if we adopt it.
Right.
So let's say, for example, we said, hey, let we we untable this, just hypothetically speaking, we untable that resolution. It's back on the floor for discussion and you say, I wanna take the pool out of there.
Yeah, but Dan.
We vote on.
I realize that, but what you were saying was that. By voting on that, by bringing it up and by voting on it, then this became the default budget.
But we can change it.
What are the chances that that's gonna be the default budget? I mean, we've had open discussions and we're gonna bring about. Andrea's proposed to put in the changes through all the workshops and we're gonna continue that conversation.
That's a very bad budget. Everybody just threw everything in there and it's.
I think it's much better than what we were presented originally.
I I agree. And 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 it has room for maybe a little bit more improvement.
Yeah.
It's uh. Face it, this is the big ugly. This is this is nasty, man.
If that becomes the default, uh with uh, we're gonna be very, very big financial problems next year. That's that.
I don't see us accepting the default.
I just tell you, I'm just motion to table it with the other one till we come back up. With the other, do it both at the same time.
To table table this one?
Don't vote right now. You're you're not gonna vote on it? What what what's the difference?
Kathy, would you please call?
I didn't hear a second. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Dilaba. So this is a motion to table the resolution. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Uh, no.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved, tabled, sorry, tabled.
What else we get?
Nothing fucking done.
We're at old business? Does anyone have any old business?
Uh. So. If I think only a person who tabled the original preliminary amended budget. Can take that off the table under old business, right?
No, that's only.
Can anybody?
Anybody can vote to take it off the table. You just can't bring up a defeated. It would have to be somebody who voted against it. Anybody can take an item off the table, correct?
I thought it was the person that tabled it. Only the person that tabled it could bring it back up. That's Jack Roberts rules.
If you give me a minute, I can answer your questions, sir. Maybe excuse. Sorry, Kathy.
I believe the tabled motion can actually come back on by anybody and as long as it's got a second and it's back up for discussion.
Well, uh, the city clerk is gonna confirm that.
All right. The other old business. So we wanna continue on?
No, but you can't. She's out there.
The clerks.
What Counselor Powers stated as I was exiting council chambers is absolutely correct. Any member of council can take it off the table. Um, with a second and then it can be revisited.
Did we cover old business?
Nope, well, we're doing it right now. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to take off. What was the resolution number?
One eighteen. I'll check in it.
One seventeen, one seventeen off the table. And one eighteen would follow, of course, Mike, but.
The thing I don't understand is is that by doing this, Andrea was adamant that this becomes the default budget.
If we don't make any other changes. But now that if we take it off the table, if we vote to take it off table. And you say hypothetically, let's get rid of the pool out of this. We take a vote on that and and we go right down through the line and then that would whatever we end up with. That would become the default budget.
Maybe we, we can't we do that without doing.
It be it becomes the new preliminary budget.
Preliminary.
The preliminary budget that you currently adopted as of November tenth, and then you would. Still have the ability between now and the twentieth to adopt a final budget. The default budget only comes into play.
Saying that it it becomes the new, so why didn't this one become just because we? Just because we, uh.
You only voted to amend, never voted on the actual amendment. And then it was tabled.
Yeah, but the way she was describing it. And did she describe it perfectly?
No.
It's a resolution. To amend the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget.
And by bringing it on.
We do from this point forward, if we don't adopt a budget tonight. Anything agreed upon. Going forward. Could become the new preliminary budget until we move a resolution to adopt. A city budget.
That's correct.
Yep. Nothing, all the discussions we just had related to your resolution. May come into play. In the discussion going forward. Through this this amendment to amend the twenty twenty-three. I've got the floor. The twenty twenty-three preliminary budget, and then everything becomes preliminary until we as a body adopt a budget. Could be tonight, could be special meeting in a couple of days. Who knows?
I just I do think the Counsel Reish, there was a motion by Counsel Scamperly and a second by Counsel Kennedy to take it off the table. We're at a call, a roll call for that motion. Kathy, would you call the law?
I was just, I was just going to have a discussion.
Oh, you have one?
On the table.
Before we voted on it, I mean, what's council's feelings? I mean, do you do you want to get into this at this point in time or do you want to reconvene and do this?
I'm not sure of when we can reconvene. I mean, we we've had we've had budget meeting after budget meeting. I mean, here we are. Uh, but at least bring us down to that two percent. Because you just passed a resolution and said we're not going. So I say at least bring us down to the two percent, even if we make some.
So you want me to vote on it tonight?
I want you to vote yes to bring it back on the table first.
And that automatically brings it down to two percent. This is what you've been arguing.
No, no.
No.
Because we still have to vote yes to do that. But before we do that. We have the opportunity to take some of your things, like Mike said, in.
Do you want to do that tonight? Is that what you want to do?
Right now, yeah. I want to I want to have a revised preliminary budget tonight. Whether we adopt or not. Because because. You just you just voted not to go with the the tax. We have to.
Can we move the vote?
Sure.
Kathy, would you please call the law?
Certainly. This is a motion by Counsel Scamperly to take bill one seventeen off the table, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. Counsel Fisher?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reish?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Counsel Dillaba?
No.
Approved.
Okay.
So now we're looking at that. Now. We can discuss. Making changes. Some of them were the same, John, they they had.
Yes, they were.
And then you had others that you wanted to add.
Well, the two, the police chief already made it. Into four twenty-one and five fifty. He already made two amendments there.
So so.
On John's.
Good, so let's start right there. Do we want to amend? What's in front of us to recognize those two items that the police chief brought? One step at a time.
Of medical expense and then uniform and clothing allowance.
I mean, that's what thirty thousand dollars in savings or something like that?
Is that already corrected in staff's budget?
No, he was modifying it.
I thought she said it was already corrected in the staff's budget.
But I do think he introduced some new changes today.
It's it's separate. It's less than.
Right, you were. Right, so he gave us two savings, so he went from. Five thousand.
So the line four twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken, he said we can knock three thousand off.
Because he, no, yeah, because he added at seventy-five and he said he can do with forty-five hundred.
So it's three.
Yep, and then on the next line, uniform and clothing allowance. He said the amendment was at ten.
Wait, 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 wait. So you're talking about medical expense?
Yep, he went down where it says seventy-five hundred under modified budget.
Yep.
He said he can do with forty-five hundred.
So is someone going to capture these?
We're doing it right now. We're going to hold on each individually.
And then. Uniform and clothing allowance. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but you said that would go from fifteen to seven?
Correct.
Fifteen to seven?
Yes.
Where's that?
Under right underneath medical expense, um, it's five fifty.
I'm not seeing fifteen or seven.
Right, it ends in point five five zero.
So that's a savings of another three thousand.
One that got in your.
No, he said it was clothing and allowance he could get by with the seven, I believe.
Yes.
So. And proposed was.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve. I'm sorry. I was thinking he was going from seven to to John's ten thousand dollar amendment.
Yeah. You need the one on tonight's agenda.
So there's ten grand right there. Is that what we did? Or eleven eleven thousand, right?
I. I don't understand the last amendment.
Uh, I think that the chief is suggesting that line A three one two zero point five five zero. Um, be reduced to seven thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the modified budget is not thirty-seven thousand?
You're on the wrong page. On tonight's, in tonight's.
It's attached to.
It's a tail.
Number one seventeen.
Bill one seventeen in tonight's agenda.
You you had the same one I had to be changed?
Yes. You need.
I printed it off of that.
Well, you need the ones dated for today's agenda, not the fifth.
Yeah, but I printed it off the agenda I got at home.
They're having it on your desk.
Bill one seventeen?
At the top, it says Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two. And I think, um. The line above that, which is the medical expense, three one two zero point four four two one. It should say, so that line is going to go to forty-five hundred.
Yes.
Those are the only two changes that have been.
So it's this one.
So I'd like to motion that we amend. This. Revised preliminary budget to reflect those two changes. Would anybody like to?
I don't think we need to to do that by resolution. I think we can just. Agree. And continue to move.
No, I think we need to do it.
I I but regardless, I'm in favor. I, you know.
Kathy, what's your professional opinion?
If council intends to make further changes that the majority of council agrees with, then it seems simplistic to just. Make a list of all those changes and then amend once the resolution, not adopt.
Just amend.
Just amend that.
Just amend the resolution. It's whatever council's preferences.
So we have a consensus to to make those two amendments?
Yeah.
Just for the, I apologize, for the uniforms and clothing allowance. He's agreed to take seven thousand or seventy-five hundred off the twenty-seven nine fifty?
It's actually at fifteen in tonight's budget. And he's agreed to take. S move it to seven thousand, correct?
Yes.
So that that total line would be seven thousand, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So that's a savings of twenty K.
Well, I was on the right.
You were on the right.
So uniform and clothing allowance goes from fifteen thousand down to seven thousand.
Correct.
Yes.
And the line above that at seventy-five hundred goes down to forty-five.
And and none of this amounts to much of anything, but everything counts, I guess.
So he asked, he asked to get a come up with something and he gave us something.
Want to give up that toolbox?
I believe he said something about the overtime as well, that he could get by with a small savings and overtime. Am I correct or no?
That was from two seventy to two sixty, I believe. Correct?
Okay.
Yeah, that.
Eight three one two zero point one two zero.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Eight three one two zero point one two zero.
Thank you.
It's D four in your budget for looking for that, sorry.
Two seventy to two sixty.
Uh, one of the other changes in Counsel Counsel Reish's amendment was. In the revenue section with regard to sales tax. Original proposal. Uh, has two point five. The amendment has two point seven. Counsel Reish had proposed two point six million.
I didn't know if that was.
In our first budget session, we chose to.
Looks like a typo from.
I thought so.
Because it's a two hundred thousand dollar increase.
So you still are proposing two point seven?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
And nobody wants to do, uh, the five thousand for office expense. Nobody wants to do anything with.
Well, we can't. I mean, not we have to provide the.
Salaries for the manager. Nobody wants to lower our law. By twenty-five thousand.
I mean, I think you can lower anything you want, but what do we do when the bills come in?
Police overtime, the chief said two hundred and six, two hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes.
I propose going to two hundred and sixty thousand.
So that puts the chief at twenty-one thousand in savings tonight.
I didn't hear, did we get a consensus on raising the sale tax projection?
Well, that's what that's what we did and that's in this.
That's in this.
That's in this.
That's already in this.
I know it's in there, but is there?
Yeah.
Stay with that?
Uh, I'm I'm with it, I think. And we can change it before we adopt it.
It's now.
I'm writing these things down. So the comment I have on the sales tax proposal is. The two point five that was recommended in the adopted preliminary budget is based on actuals. Actual receipts to date. Now, there is a, our first quarter is off because we were still working off of the old formula. So it is our best guess. Um, but it's it's. So my advice to council is if you are looking to increase that, an additional two hundred thousand dollars, that you be prepared. To take a hard look at your receipts in June. And if you're not on track to meet that two point seven. You will have to then be prepared to advise staff, direct city manager, to direct staff to. Stop expenditures to make sure that you don't end up in a in a deficit. So. That is a very optimistic number, two point seven million dollars.
Yes. And. Is there a consensus to? Take a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the sewer fund and the water fund?
Wait, wait, I think we should stick to that. And then move on. So. As you started to say, Mayor, do we want to change that two hundred thousand? Let's stay right on that sales tax rate. Uh. I think you're right. I think it's a little high and I I agree with Andrea as well. Now that now that she said that.
Just increasing taxes, we're already way, we're already way too high.
But we have to be real. Their numbers. So is there a consensus to take the two hundred thousand off to change it to a hundred thousand? Let's do it first. Let's, is there a consensus to take the whole two hundred thousand off?
Yeah.
I genuinely think if.
Yes.
You're, you're two, is there anyone else?
Angela thinks that if we're at two point five, then we're at two point five. He just needs to make sure that Counsel Powers is.
Powers, we're thinking about taking that extra two hundred thousand that we knocked off sales tax. Or added to sales taxes. And taking it off in there and trying to. Uh, not overestimate. Are you in consensus?
To two point six?
No, just at two point five right now. That's.
At the proposed. That might be heavy. Well, as Andrea said, you know. So what are you looking for, a consensus to go there?
Yeah.
More realistic.
You're already at a four hundred and twenty-three thousand. Dollar. More use of fund balance, so. You're adding another two hundred thousand to that, which. Are you going to be at like one? You're going to be at one three million out of fund balance unless you get a way to pay for it.
Split it?
No.
Well, I don't, I I I give slippery slope to make projections when our sales tax numbers aren't in for this calendar year and we preempted. Which I think is going to only hurt us.
I think we have to, you know, not, I don't, we have to look at staff at this point in time.
Did two hundred thousand dollars come back out of the general fund if we don't get it?
Okay.
You know, I just think. I just want to be. I I I trust in staff's work. I believe they say two and a half million dollars. I hope more, but. They put a lot of work in. I think the two hundred thousand dollars should come up. I don't know where we ended up on the consensus.
I I agree.
Is there anyone else?
It's twice tonight I agree with you.
I'm fine with this.
Okay, then we have three. Is there another one or no?
Anybody else?
No. So we leave the two hundred thousand in then, consensus?
How many do you have?
Did you, did you have consensus?
Yeah, I sound fine with the two point five. I.
Oh.
Not over allocating.
So, yeah, we go to two point five.
Okay.
So are all these changes, right, we're at, we're at a two percent cap, right? So are all these changes that you're proposing that we've already agreed to good to come out of fund balance?
No.
Where are they coming out of? Cause you only have so many pockets.
I think what we have to do is get through the changes that council wants to see. Angela and I can run that for you and let you know what that looks like. So I know we've got, um, we're putting back, we're going back to two point five in sales tax from two point seven. Um, there's been some savings discussed in the police budgets. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what the order is, but the, your, your proposal, Counselor Reese, had the elimination of the pool. That's in this amendment. So we could go there, have a discussion on whether you want to take that out or leave that in.
I think we have to have that discussion.
I think that's a discussion to be had.
My thought on the pool is maybe it should be closed for a year, possibly two, if we not. We should take the saving and make a catch. Cause eventually we won't have, we don't reinvest into it and if we, uh, if we took maybe, uh, money over the, you know, paying lifeguards and other things and invest it back in the pool, maybe we could get it going. Running properly.
I just don't want to explain to everybody that you're not gonna have, you know, where's the pickleball courts? Where's the playground and, and now the pool's closed? And you just buy it for one point, four million dollars. It's like, what, what are you people doing here? I mean, I thought those things were included in the ready project, that the pickleball courts and the playground.
They, they are, Counselor.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
They are.
Who's telling me they are?
They are, and they're projected to be done. They have a milestone date to have them done in, in advance of the.
In the playground?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That's we, when we, that's all in it.
Feel better about that then. He's telling me.
They. In the.
Well, John.
The regular money or they, uh, were, uh, doing a, 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 a.
Well, so the project as a whole is in excess of the available grant fund. The city share is in excess of our original percentage, but those improvements are included in what the council has approved.
Right.
And the milestone date for completion of those is, is in advance of the Memorial Day holiday for twenty twenty-three.
Right.
May twenty-sixth, possibly, I want to say.
Which if they wouldn't have approved the wall, we would be not having that specific date.
Correct.
I would really like to see us amend the budget, uh, to take the eight hundred thousand dollar use of fund balance to pay for the Main Street pump station and write a grant for that and save the taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars. What you had in there was one point five million dollars in expenses out of fund balance to cover the, uh, the vector truck, the dump truck and, and that. And I just, I think staff needs to write a grant and save us eight hundred thousand dollars and we'll have that eight hundred thousand dollars to use somewhere else on other pressing things. And I'd make a motion to amend that. And I mean, that's, that's like a million dollars you can save. And.
So those expenses are associated with the water and so, just, just to be clear, so they won't impact the tax rate? I, I mean, not that they don't need to be discussed. We did take those out of this proposed budget. Those are, those, the dump truck, uh, the vector truck, um.
The only thing we took out was the vector truck.
The vector truck has been taken out of.
The dump truck was already.
The dump truck was, was re.
Right. So we didn't take that out and I'm proposing to take the eight hundred thousand out as an expense in this year's, in the two thousand twenty-three budget and that we, we take the time to write a grant for it. And, and that we, because we're already spending one point two million out of fund balance just for, is that just for the loan?
I'd like to stick to the general fund budget. Not, I don't want to jump the sewer right now. We can talk about.
It's the whole budget.
No.
Yeah. It's the whole budget. It's all one thing. It's all, it's all the same people, everything else. And I'd like to save the taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars and either staff write a grant or someone else write a grant and save the eight hundred thousand dollars.
So there are two grants.
Good. Then let's take it out and hope that they come in. And if we have to write another one, we'll write another one. There consensus to take it out?
I'd like to hear from Shane on that.
I, I just, you want to take it out on the thought that we, and the hope that we're gonna get a grant?
We've already done it once and we, and we saved us ourselves a million dollars. And you're opposed to that too?
We, we did. We got a million dollar grant. We don't know if we've saved it or anything because the costs have gone up so much.
Well, that's not, that's not, so it's probably gonna be more than eight hundred thousand because there's gonna be change orders.
So you, you, we had to have it paid to have it reengineered. Now the costs have gone up, um, you know, Steve Joe always said this, that, you know, we might, we might save, we might not. And I, I think that whole million dollar grant is gonna be absorbed in the additional cost. So we don't know. But, um.
I'm in favor and I made a motion to take the eight hundred thousand out of there. We're, you're proposing to increase rates by twenty-five percent. And I think we need to take that out of there. And, uh, we need to write a grant for it or, 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 you know. So it'll save, it'll save the taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars if we write a grant.
Andrea, can you please explain the two grants that you're referencing?
Isn't there a timeline on that million dollars?
Yes.
To go over a, a certain amount of time, we do that?
That's correct. So we have entered into an agreement to accept the N B R C grant for a million dollars. We, uh, we do now have a commitment. We have, we had to provide a commitment to provide the matching funds. And we have started work on that project. Uh, it is currently out to bid right now with anticipated construction in the spring. It is the, it is the pump station that pumps the waste from the entire west side of the city.
Right. And it's been like that for years and it's not good. I mean, make all the arguments. We can save eight hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not, I'm not making an argument. I'm just telling you the information so that council is informed. We do have two pending grants right now. One is with Saint Lawrence County through their ARPA Infrastructure for Municipalities program where we have applied for four hundred thousand dollars. We also have, uh, an application that was submitted through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application.
They already went through this before.
Submitted in July. Uh, we anticipate awards to be made on those. Typically they're made in, in mid-December. So we should be hearing on those on the C F A grants in any day. Uh, so there are two pending grants out there.
So I think we should take it out and, uh, and work diligently to get those approved or, or add another. And are you gonna tell us it's not gonna affect the rate? Is that what you're, we're gonna hear next?
I was just going to clarify that the impact on the budget is to remove eight hundred thousand dollars from capital expenditures and to remove eight hundred thousand dollars from the appropriated fund balance. So if those are out of the budget, your normal operating revenue and your normal operating expenses remain unchanged. So there has to be a rate adjustment or a use of fund balance in some respect to cover operations outside of capital expenditures. The budget was built, so you had total revenue, total expenditures equal with a twenty-five percent increase in sewer rates. The, the one point three million in fund balance is large in part that eight hundred thousand dollars for the, um, pump station. So taking that out and reducing the rate, there still needs to be a use of fund balance.
But we, but you do save eight hundred thousand dollars, all right, Angela?
If you receive a grant, you would.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. Rather than just, rather than just spend the eight hundred thousand dollars, um, you, you know, we act like this is just.
It's a significant amount of money.
It, it's, it's almost a million dollars. I mean, I, I, it's.
Agreed.
Especially when you have change orders, there'll probably be at least two hundred thousand dollars in change orders on that project.
But just because the money is budgeted for it, doesn't mean that if you get a grant, you have to spend it on that. It seems, to me, it seems like if you don't get the grant, then what do we do?
Well, the grant that has the timeline, I think, is the one that commits the council to say, we're gonna do this budget. We're not, we're gonna do this project. We're not gonna do this project. So if we miss the timeline on the million dollars.
I don't think that's the case at all.
We're back at one point eight million.
I don't think you're lying.
So we have committed to the project. We have executed a grant agreement. We have executed an L D D agreement with the Development Authority of the North Country. We have contracted with E D R.
I know.
Done the design.
But.
We have incurred expenses. So should we not comply with the timeframe of the N B R C grant?
And, and have you ever written an extension or asked for an extension with an N B R C grant?
I'm.
Uh, what about the last one that was like three years in the making? I know you can. So, you know, you don't offer that information. You just make arguments and why we can't do this.
No.
Yeah.
So what's happening? Does anyone want to take that?
I, I do. That's my motion.
So.
No.
No.
Okay.
So the pool or Rebecca, the pool, the pool, what was written determining to the pool is gonna have to be, I, I believe, there's no way to fund the pool.
If council wants, so we did make some reductions to the pool budget to really be bare bones or it is in the, even in this amendment. Um, you'll see the cost is reduced to seventy-seven thousand. Uh, if council, if council wants to do something more in line with what the mayor suggesting decrease that budget even further, but leave money in, um, contractual expenses, uh, consultants. Uh, we can, we can choose the line. If you want to invest in repairs that we know we need to do, that could be twenty, thirty, fifty thousand dollars, whatever the appropriate amount is that council wants to dedicate to the pool.
I think before we dedicate any money to the pool, we need to see where we come back with sales tax. My personal opinion. Before we dedicate money that we may need to just up, be operational.
Or you can go to a zero budget, which is what we have in the current preliminary budget. For the pool.
It's, it's a hard one.
It, it, it's, it's.
Hard on that. So what would be the consensus? Take the pool out?
And, and put money away for repairs or like dedicate, let's say, instead of going to seventy-seven, we, if we cut that half and, and let's say we, we said thirty, thirty-five, for example, towards pool repairs. Let's get it fixed. Something like that.
How about you get us an estimate that shows the damage of the pool and what it's gonna cost actually fixing? Instead of saying no, because everybody's been saying for the last ten years, we've been going on a wing and a prayer. We have two pumps. They get taken here, they get taken there. Every time they need to be fixed, but the pool gets up and running.
Shane, did you present that?
Instead of sitting here and shutting the thing down because we're, we're talking the money part of it because it, it takes out the lifeguards too and we put it in the bank, that piggy bank, the kids don't swim. Then if they swim off the river, they get arrested. Off to, uh, any, any, any city practice. So no.
I think we've had.
I'd like to know how, what's the life use of it?
We have reached out to several companies to do pool repairs um, and get quotes and estimates to supplement this budget for council. We have not gotten any actual response to provide to council. We can, and we continue to work on that. Shane can speak to that.
Well, I mean, it's not from what I listened the other night and I didn't hear him say that there's holes all through the pool and it's just leaking out. There's, there's some that might, you know, patch them again, get by another year and like John says, write another grant. I mean.
Right. So in the.
What are you gonna do with the kids? They got us. They get.
In the.
You're gonna push them in the river and something's gonna happen? Or you take them and let them swim in the pool?
In the workshop we had, and then I'll let Shane comment. The pool, the baby pool did not open last year and we would not, we would not be able to open it this year in twenty-three either because of the substantial leaks that we have not been able to fix. There are leaks in the main pool and we have not been able to secure an estimate to provide to council, but we know they're there. We know that they won't prohibit, uh, us from opening the pool, but there are things that we'll have to continually monitor um, and work towards a long-term fix. So with that, I think.
Yeah. The, the other thing is I think in the equipment maze, we do gotta maintain that. There's sensors that have gone bad. I think it was twenty thousand we had in there that would have to stay in too. We could take that out. To, cause that, some of them haven't been replaced since the thing was opened. Can we get through another year? Yeah. The plaster in the walls, the concrete, you know, we have to repatch it, but and we are trying to get somebody here. We might have to reach out farther. So we've come, we might have to go down past Syracuse to try to get a contractor up. I don't know if they would charge the company with an estimate or not. So if we're gonna open, I'd recommend leaving some money in there in the salt mine to, to get, you know, to pay. We have to pay someone to come give an estimate. Thank you. Thanks for your answer.
So maybe we should just leave it as is. And if we get an estimate, we can make a decision during summer whether to save that money or repair it or continue on. But either way, we got money earmarked right here, seventy-seven thousand.
Oh, consensus to leave it in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It's good. We agreed.
He's still on there. He's just not showing his video, but he is there and his line is open.
So the pool's staying at seventy-seven. Is that the consensus?
I believe that was consensus right now.
Yeah, cause you can wire it up for seventy-seven.
Yes, it was.
And, and we don't wanna, I mean, we're, um, how about not fill in one of the police officer positions? I.
So I believe, um, that we looked at this the most economical way and the police chief can come and comment wrong is to look at this in twos because platoons are in fours. Uh, so I would recommend if council's going to look at making cuts that you might, you can obviously talk about, about one, but.
But you were, you were adamant in there about having to do staff reductions, but.
Yeah.
And, and you still feel that way.
I, I do. I just think that we should hear what.
I think we already heard. Didn't, didn't we already hear during the budget stuff?
So if you, I, I just mean if you cut one, did you, did you not say one? Maybe I misheard you.
I did.
I did not at any point in time speak about one, what one cut looks like. What I have spoken about and what the police chief has spoken about is adding four or, or two. Um, so if we, um, if we lose the two dispatch and we lose two patrolmen, uh, that does keep us at minimum staffing to provide twenty-four hour coverage, but it doesn't allow us to have any backup. Uh, if you have the four that are in this amendment, um, then you have a little bit of backup if someone's out on a worker's comp injury, if someone's sick, if someone's on vacation, et cetera. So I just wanted, I, I guess I can't really speak to the one. I haven't talked to the chief about one.
I don't know if there's any, any interest in doing that anyways. I just brought it up. I mean, is, is there any interest in talking about that? Because you're gonna get to the point here where you're, you're at, uh, no place to go. Yeah. I mean, you're gonna, while, while it's a two percent cap, you're looking at using, uh, probably well over six hundred thousand in fund balance on, on top of the seven fifty that we already talked about with the changes that you've made. So I think everything else has been insignificant. So if you're not willing to talk about staffing either at D P W or at the police, then we might as well have them do the numbers and start talking about whether we're gonna do fund balance or what.
I think we need to take staff's recommendations on staffing cuts. And I believe that if we don't do the staffing cuts this year with what we're facing next year, that you're gonna lose your whole police department down the road. We're gonna have to raise taxes like staff recommend. We're gonna have to. We're gonna have to raise taxes, like staff recommend, we're gonna have to cut staff. You know, police, dispatch, and not replace the DPW. And we're gonna have to take the fund balance. A limited amount, not, you know, so that it will be sustainable, but we, staff put together the right budget for our circumstances, and if we don't follow that recommendations and we don't make the hard decisions now, it's gonna be very bad for the police department next year, so if we follow the recommendations and our chief works to secure extra policing from the sheriffs and the troopers, help uh cover that evening shift. Um, we we raise the taxes, limit the fund balance, we will have the money hopefully next year to stabilize that, the police department, and not go from, you know, write down eight, ten people and, you know, and put them at even a greater safety risk. It's, it's um, it's not pleasant, but in the long term, it'll be better.
Yeah, I think if we're looking at three, or if we're looking at the the four and the the other one. Um, and he's proposing to go to three, I'd rather, I'll take three than none. And, because I'm, I'm not gonna vote to do away with not fill four of them, not gonna do it. I, I think that's extremely irresponsible, because there's, there is no wiggle room, and it's not safe for them. Um, he needs at least three of them.
Is there, is there, is there two more votes then for going down to three?
I have a quick question, I have a quick question uh related to their their shift work, are they on eight-hour shifts or twelve-hour shifts?
They are currently on eight-hour shifts.
Please.
Was, hey Dan, I know this is, this is one of your war cries years ago, uh, did we see a savings in twelve-hour shifts?
There is a savings in twelve-hour shifts, uh, well, the chief can speak to it.
There's limitations also.
Yes, the, so the savings we get um from twelve-hour shifts is from what the unions essentially would give up for them to go to twelve-hour shifts, they give up a lot of contractual benefits, uh, time off obligations. Um, and then as what the city gets out of it is, um, I can take their twelve-hour shifts and let's say, uh, two, two twelve-hour shifts is twenty-four hours. I can send them off to a three-day training and take their, that two uh, two days of work and make that into three days, right? Three eight-hour days, and the, the way the agreement is rolled, um, they don't get overtime, right? They work three days now at our eight-hour normal day in lieu of their two twelve-hour shifts. So I can get three hours of work out of them on a, to train them, um, instead of paying overtime where I can't do that on eight hours. So I save money there on training costs and and their, what they give up. Um, and they get every other weekend off, so there's benefits both ways. But just to look at the schedules in black and white side by side, it's hard to visualize the uh, the savings, but um, we definitely save money in the long run.
Echo, um, Council Fisher's comment, would it, would it be advantageous for our member, for our, would, would they have as much of a mental? I I would imagine the, the stressors they're under now is not going to be alleviated all that much through a twelve-hour shift. Uh, if they, if they're mandated, uh, you know, for another twelve-hour shift.
Right now, we're now going back to twelve-hour shifts on January first. Um, I need seventeen police officers to do that. Um, the seventeenth one being the SRO, so it doesn't really count, it doesn't count on the shift, so at the school district. Um, and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are, uh, well, really nineteen and twenty are detectives. And two of us are administrative officers, essentially myself and the lieutenant. Um, but the lieutenant picks up a lot of overtime, backfills those sergeant overtimes, and uh, you know, as you know, uh, as the chief, I don't really work shift work, but uh, I fill in shifts as well. In fact, I'm working Christmas Eve for the guys as, don't get overtime for that, as you know, that's how short we are, so. Yeah, really, all, all twenty positions, that's where they are, so it's, that's what that nineteenth and twentieth position will get you, is your two detectives. So.
Man, they're just as vital as our patrol.
So is there?
You're welcome.
Is there any other votes for going down to three, restoring three positions instead of four?
I mean.
No, there was none in the other one, there was cutting four. So this adds three back.
Currently, you are at seventeen, including yourself and the SRO.
Yes.
So that's actually.
Rather at three than none.
That's what you said, and and if they are going to twelve hours, and and as far as mental health goes, if you only take off twenty-four hours in the second week you work and you, you get the whole week. Because you get the ties into the weekend, you took the two days off, you would have worked, correct?
It's gonna affect overtime though, isn't it?
No, overtime's tough, because you get the, you only get a limited people that can work, because you're working twelve, twelve hours. So if somebody doesn't show up and you can't get somebody to fill it, you can only work, you can only work, you gotta split the twelve-hour shift between two guys and the overtime.
Correct.
So I'm saying the, the twenty grand or the ten grand we knocked off, roll back on at least.
No, because you're picking up three men.
No.
No, I'm asking that for that two sixty, I need that, I need twenty officers to to fill that.
So if you don't have the four, it's back to two seventy.
It's higher than that, right? Actually, what you presented before, it was.
Okay, creative, don't guard.
Hundreds of thousands.
Don't get so creative, you know, and that's.
Yeah. I can't remember it ever being, having a balance.
What's that?
Some guards, usually they were, went right through it, everybody's just as hungry as they could to get as much.
Yeah, well, now I, my guys fight not to work overtime, not to fight to get it, and that, that's, uh, because there's so much of it. You know, we have a force list now, there was never a force list, I was never forced to work overtime, it was rare, very rare, and other force all the time.
So is there anybody else that's in favor of restoring three instead of four?
I want four.
Okay, so there's no point in talking about that anymore, then the DPW, the two positions that are both retired?
I mean, I'd go three than none.
Well, you might end up with it, I, I don't know the way this is gonna go, but.
You just cut off the three, so.
What's up? That's what I'm saying.
Are you in favor of going down to three? Yeah.
I mean, if, if you're telling, if we're looking at we're going to lose four police officers, or we're going to lose one. I mean, it just, why would you, I'm not gonna say let's lose all four. So I mean, if, if three is, is it, I mean, if we're looking at losing all of them, or, I mean, and that would that, what if we're looking at that? So you have how many open positions? So how?
Well, that depends on what's my full number.
Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm, I, that's what I'm looking for, I, I want four.
How many vacant slots do you have right now?
Well, if, in the twenty twenty-two budget, I had twenty positions.
Why do we talk this way? I, this is what I don't understand.
Well, that's why, why don't I?
Right now, right now, it's like.
Well, I don't know what, what we're talking for numbers, so, so to say, how many openings do I have? I have, I guess I've had two officers that have left because of the threat of. And I have one officer, um, pending legal action, and we expect there to be a resolution to that here by the end of the month.
And one enrolled in year ten.
One enrolled in the academy, uh, she actually graduates on uh Saturday.
Did you lose a disability person too?
That was the one we approved last year. Or this spring.
I saw two injured officers.
Do you have anybody that's left that was on the two oh seven C that's not on it anymore?
At one point last year, I, I didn't, at one point last year, I had three officers on two oh seven C, now I have two officers that are on two oh seven C.
Thank you very much.
So how many officers can actually report to work and do the job?
Full police work?
Full police work.
Counting myself would be fifteen currently. That can do full police work, counting myself currently is fifteen officers.
So three additional.
So you wouldn't be laying anybody off next year if, if the budget's as bad as some people say it is. I think that's Andrew's mic position.
So was there four just for consensus? Was there?
One. For three, three police officers.
I'll go with three, but I hope we can find room for one more. I don't wanna go in looking at four cuts.
Okay, so you make that change, can you let us know where we're at now? Can you guys get together and let us know where we're at while we take a break?
Yeah, if we can take a five-minute break, we can tell you where we're at. With three.
Oh, wait, 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 what about the DPW positions, the two that are retired? So you're telling me that that's gonna increase general fund by fifty thousand? So it doesn't save anything, but it saves a hundred and seven, a hundred and sixty-three thousand out of the other funds?
So, the way that we have accounted for council's request to increase the inter-fund transfer to water and sewer resulted in a redistribution of staffing in DPW. Um, and so really, the impact of those two retirees now would have to, we would have to go back and probably relook at all of those budgets. Because just to take them out now would actually increase the cost to the general fund.
It decreased.
I think we should leave.
But it would, you, you're looking at a twenty-five percent increase in the sewer fund, and it's a hundred and.
Not because of that.
Well, part because of that.
You're also looking at a four percent increase in water that has got bonds that are falling off in twenty twenty-three.
Well, we can discuss that when we get back after.
We are taking, taking money from our sewer fund.
Andrew just dialed nine one one, great. I think that's a great reason, we should go home now.
It is.
I'm like, Andrew, are you gonna shut that off? Are you ever gonna, is there something we should know? Yeah, like, I know iPhones, if you hold the side of them, or if they connected, like, it'll, you hit two buttons at the same time and automatically it'll dial.
I was really just trying to be transparent with you, so I think we're just, Mayor, are we just taking a five-minute break?
Five minutes?
Five minutes. Please remember. Holy cow. Yes.
Do you remember your life?
What? Sad. Okay, what? Right, you got it?
No.
I just had to test today. Sucks. As a right move, you can take those two away. Now we can. They'll hold us. Better for ten days, five days. They'll all be in. Where do they work at? They're all in. So when we finish this, we're down to one right short. I think there's nothing to do in waters. There is, there's no, there's no rate. Well, depending on what the result is, you know, say. Everything can be amended, that's what we're doing. Just the rate, now there's no more cuts. No. I don't think so. But it doesn't have any effect on the other one. It's the same people, taking money out of different pockets, but it's not the same thing. It's one of those hard to You have so much writing time, you favor it, I'm gonna have to figure out what is when I'm gonna write. This is extremely hard right now. Ten times harder than pressure.
Yes, you are correct.
It's not like this one's Is that one different from what's in your packet? Is that why you're confused? Because you're looking at twelve.
This one is different than what I had.
You're thinking of the one.
This is, this matches. I was looking at the one from last meeting.
The, the fifth, right before they, because they amended it right before the meeting, so that's the one. Okay, that's the one you're looking at. Okay, that's what, I just wanted to make sure. There's a cinnamon, sir, which, yes. Candy too.
I should have packed the lunch.
Well, you're the most tender guy here, so maybe you should start.
Yeah.
He always had like those old fashioned candies.
I, I was talking to million, two thousand, over seven years. This is overall. There are also eight guys lost. So that pretty much because they're not there anymore. They can't fucking show us. [coughs] Maybe you're still asleep.
Yes.
Most important is probably just the last page.
I can just send my PDF. Just give me a second. All right, so many papers. Okay, I can see.
So if everybody goes to, oh, I don't know, do we have to like re-adjourn or something?
No, no, we never really take the leave.
So if you go to page three, that is this high level summary of the changes, so we decreased expenditures by eighty-eight thousand dollars, but we decreased revenue by two hundred thousand dollars. So the net change there is is a hundred and eleven.
I don't think we took one police officer out.
This has, this accounts for three police officers versus four, which is.
But we didn't vote that way. Oh, there was?
Yeah. That's consensus for three.
All right.
Problem is, I, I don't, I don't think the, again, I know that you went through it back to two point five, but. I don't, I don't, I understand the numbers of sales tax that have come in. And that this year is gonna be kind of screwed, but. There's gonna come a point in time where somebody's gonna have to do it, a full check from balances, because I think. There's no way we're getting what we, what we're supposed to be getting on the sheets is, I mean, today's that came through looked better. But I, I, I don't, I think going back to two point five, if anything, I mean, you took the two hundred thousand out, so you just kicked up. This last page before a hundred thousand, I mean, two hundred thousand more. It's, it's, you, you don't even, there's, you've got just basic data for four, for eight months. And the first three, or four, you can't really count. And a lot of people that file their sales tax, they, they don't file, the, the bigger retail do, but. The regular people, the smaller businesses and stuff, they, they file quarterly. So a lot of your numbers aren't gonna show up until the next one or the one after. So. I mean. The money.
So if we.
Money was there to do this for cops, the three, at least three, but now you, now you just put it back farther, so now we're, now we're diving back in. I don't know, I, I think the sales tax was a mistake because it just.
So if you, if you actually add two hundred thousand back into sales tax projections, and you don't meet those, it's gonna come out of fund balance anyways.
Or. Go over.
Right, but the, the bottom line is, you, you, you don't know any more of the two point five, really, just except for what. Little bit of information you have, because we don't have any, and we knew that going into doing it. And you knew it was gonna be rough waters. But to, to shortchange yourself, just to make it look like it's so far under, it's bad.
I just.
Because you don't know. There's nobody sitting in here that can tell me that it's gonna be two point five, not two point seven. Nor is it, could be two million, or it could be three million, so.
So I, I think the best government will buy that.
Yeah, but their staff's looking at flawed data, that, because we don't even know it all yet. The same thing that happened in twenty twenty-two is not gonna happen in twenty twenty. You're not gonna have those first four months that we're still tagging on that, and I know that could be very bad. Or, who knows? Maybe they're probably gonna get this, if they're doing it right, we'll, we'll end up with the monies we deserve, or are entitled to.
So with all.
The one in the room, this is the one that's, that's, you know. I mean, there's so much on, everything that's on, that keeps coming out on these budgets is on, really, a lot of it, you know, I mean, it's limited, some of it's limited data.
So with all the changes that we've made to the budget over the workshops and today, and right now. We're looking at five hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars more coming out of fund balance for a grand total of one point two eight four nine one four. Right, I mean, that's where, that's where we're getting the revenue from.
The increase in fund balance would be one point two, one million two hundred and eighty-four thousand, as opposed to one point one seven.
So I, I'd make a motion to go back to the projection of. Two point seven for sales tax, so that we're not taking so much out of fund balance. And, you know, be optimistic that. That, that, that revenue comes in.
Andrew, or sorry, Angela, what is your perspective on that? I mean, you were pretty clear, you thought two point five is the mark, correct?
It was.
You still. If we look at the collection quarters, the first collection quarter that the city preempted on. The city collected four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The second quarter was four hundred and fifty-five. The fifty percent home rule that the county shares with us on those two quarters gave us two hundred and seventy-six thousand. So the total for those two quarters was one million, one fifty-five. That's two quarters, we double that, we're at two point three million for an annual number. This budget includes two point five million, yours is two point seven. Now. My recommendation was to bump it up to the two point five, or staff's recommendation, I mean, collectively, I think two point five makes better sense. That already includes a little bit of a push. It does, based on two quarters of data. Sales taxes due again for the quarterly filers December twentieth, and we will not know until January. What that third quarter of a full collection year equals, so we are restricted in the data that we have. But going off the data we have, if my, you wanted my most conservative recommendation, it would be two point three million. But two point five is where we ended as staff.
So. What happens if that doesn't come in? Does that mean you run a deficit?
Well, you're, with a one million plus appropriation, you already have a deficit, you're running a larger deficit, so I would recommend, uh, to what. Interim city manager said, mid-June, take a hard look and you have to curb spending, I mean, you just can't keep running deficits when you're appropriating a seven-digit fund balance.
I'll rescind my motion and, and make it two point six million.
I, I still think if two point five is what's recommended, I mean.
Two six. I, I think it's that. I just, I mean. For what limited you have, you're just reaching out and everybody's pulling on the numbers, but I don't think that's, that's too far off. Because I think we're gonna find out that they're not doing it correctly, and the, the monies that we're supposed to be getting are not, and we will eventually, but. It's, you know, it's twenty twenty, but.
Well, what, I'm sorry, Steve.
Get it, we, we'll get what we're, what we weren't entitled to eventually, because there, somebody's gonna have, because there's, it's, there's no way that they're, they're correctly. Giving us our monies, there's, there's, it's just no way.
You, you, you're thinking that maybe there's something, that, that we're not getting a true calculation?
They haven't done it ever, so this is, this is uncharted waters right here, right now. Even the counties probably, I, I don't want to speak for the county, but, I mean, even with the one percent, I mean, I'm sure that there's a. Them figuring out what to be kicking over to us is not, not, you know, I mean, they're using pen and paper. So it's, I mean.
A lot of these questions were asked prior to us preempting as well, I mean, you can't do anything about that, I suppose.
Well, we knew, you, you knew that it, it was. You didn't know, that was the part of it, because there was no data.
Well, it still gets, you know, unfortunately, we don't have our twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one audit, you know, but, I mean, you know, the county gets their audit, and I'm sure the state comptroller's office audits it all. I, I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you're wrong, you know, because it's intricate, but we've got box stores that we, we might not be able to get true calculations from.
There's, there's no, no doubt in my mind right now, that's, that's happening. It's, there's, there's no way they've been taking in the funds that they are. And, and for us to shortchange ourselves on this, and, and, and end up losing like, you know, potentially cutting bodies that really no reason to cut, but.
Pretty strong statement.
So if that is the consensus of council, I mean, that's gonna obviously decrease your.
And your benefit consensus, how many?
He dropped it to two points, and I said two point six five. Oh, two six, I'll, I'll take a hundred rather than nothing.
There's three, is there anyone else?
So that makes it four thirty-four. Nine one four. There's no point kicking this back to staff and saying, find another two hundred thousand dollars in reductions, right?
Be this, well, I. Yeah, do we, do we start talking about over the winter, you know. Working with an organization to raise some money, to be able to look at the pool operations and maybe look to, to, to do some kind of fundraising for the community and the children. That, that benefit from this pool, to be able to save some.
That's why I wanted to create the, the charitable fund or whatever it was, because it can be used specifically for that. I believe that the city is the charity, that's why it's created that way, I may be right. Well, it's in the law, you can look it up. So that would end up with a budget where you're using one point one eight four nine one four and fund balance to get us through this year. And. I'm only voting for twelve point five percent increase in the sewer rates, I'm only one councillor. And, and Angela, you said, with the seven hundred thousand put back in the fund balance, where would that leave us if, if we use that much fund balance? Would we be? I don't have it.
This one? The, I have it right here. What is the one point one, is what, that's new adjusted number is?
One point one eight four nine one four.
Where did you get that number from, John?
That is taking page two, no, sorry, page one of your budget summary that was just provided. And going to the appropriated fund balance section.
Okay.
And accounting for. The one hundred thousand difference in sales tax.
Okay.
The revenue line.
Correct, okay, I'm with you now. Approximately two point eight million.
Two point eight million left over?
At the end, that works, at the end of twenty twenty-three, if your twenty twenty-two hits where projected, the twenty twenty-three would use. One point two eight four, we add back that seven hundred thousand, we'd be roughly at two point eight million, at the end of twenty twenty-three.
And that's above the comptroller's recommendation, we gotta take five hundred thousand dollars out for the firefighters?
Well, we just added seven sixty back in, we'd have to take out another half a million to six hundred thousand, so that brings that back down to two point two.
And, and where is that in terms?
And that is below the two month of expenditures goal that the office of state comptroller has for you.
By how much?
About a hundred thousand, roughly.
Not bad, not bad.
I mean, just depends what happens.
I agree with Mike, there should be more reductions, I, I mean, it. The fire department costs us three point nine million dollars. Police causes three point two million, minus the one officer we eliminated, one position we just eliminated. There just isn't any, any money, I agree with you, Mike, but there's also, you know, I guess we're trying to get by, I mean, no one wants to cut four police officer positions. I'm happy we were able to save three. But I could probably live with that kind of a budget, as long as we only increase sewer rates by twelve point five percent.
I just worry about what? We're bad in that problem.
Well, the three, the three options said. You know, the, the three options we had for sewer. Either the twenty-five of ones, or it was broken down into a couple of years, and then even afterwards, it was added on, three percent was objected, because it's never gonna stop. And the add-ons that are gonna come through bonding. After this, well, and the four hundred thousand, I think it's four hundred thousand in there for those down to ready project, we're not even counting other, other stuff that's probably gonna get dumped in there.
We also have a revale coming through, which will give us some money, although people aren't gonna be happy about that. The idea of using pilot payments from the state of New York, or the request for pilot payments, that has a bill number, it's. I forget the bill number now, but anyways, it has a number now, and. We could work toward trying to get pilot payments from the state during the course of the year. I mean, I'm, I'm running out of ideas, probably should have a joint recreation commission with the town of Lisbon and Ostrogachi, since they use their facilities, and we can't even afford them anymore. Probably worth looking into that, I think they do that in Messina. You know, those are some ideas, but.
I know for a lot of the youth athletics, though, Lisbon hosts their own, and most of the time when they play with us, they're playing against us, they don't usually use our facilities, like. I know, like for Kiwanis, they have their own facilities, for soccer, like their Lisbon teams and their Hubelton teams, they don't practice here and use our fields for that purpose, they only play against us in a game, they don't actually use the facilities.
I was thinking of the swimming pool, I don't know how many are outside in, in the arena.
I mean, don't they rent the time then?
Well, yeah, but they aren't contributing to the budget, I mean.
But if they're, they're paying a fee that we set.
Yeah.
Essentially, they are.
Right, but they are.
For the arena.
Right.
I mean, in the twenty twenty-two, the pool was free.
For anyone.
And my point is that. I mean, we can't fund these things on our own, I think we're down to less than. The new projections, just to let. We lost thirteen percent population in twelve years, one thousand two hundred and seventy-six people, we're now at, according to the projections, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two, which is a loss of two hundred and twelve more people. Between the census and. I think just a year. And then you lost the correctional facility, which was five hundred to three hundred jobs, then you lost four hundred jobs at United Helpers. We had twenty-one percent of the people in poverty, everybody wants to raise taxes, our per capita income's twenty-four thousand, roughly thousand dollars a year, whereas the US average is seventy thousand a year. And the state average is forty-three, that, that goes to show you how poor this community is. And so we gotta find other ways to do things. So. But if you wanna vote on this, and we're using four hundred and thirty-four thousand nine fourteen in fund balance, more above the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we're only increasing sewer rates by twelve point five percent, I, I could probably live with that. I'm sorry, chief, we can't fund all four positions.
As a final budget, or this preliminary budget, the, the, we are working on a preliminary.
Preliminary.
For the record.
So I say we vote on it as.
As this.
As, as what was just brought back to us.
With two point six.
With the hundred, added a hundred thousand add-on to sales tax. So.
Brings it to two point six million for sales tax revenue?
Yeah, right. So.
I mean, I'm fine as the final, I mean, what's, what are we waiting for?
Well, the next resolution would be to adopt this, or a version of this as the final, that's when you can.
But we have that on the table tonight, I mean, if we're rolling, let's, we've, it's done, ten done now. I don't see kicking the can down the road till next week, we're all gonna still sit here and fight and argue and end up with probably something along these lines, so if we're gonna go for it, let's just.
So do you wanna call the role mayor as amended?
This would be to, it would be a role called to amend initially, then as amended. So this is to amend bill number one seventeen. As represented after those changes, in addition to moving back to the two point six million in sales tax revenue.
Yes.
In addition to a twelve point five percent.
Well, that's, that's irrelevant to, we gotta, that's a separate one. We gotta get to the sewer, the water and sewer budget, gotta go to that one.
Well, it's.
This doesn't talk about, there's no. Just doesn't have, the rates are, I.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
This is to amend the preliminary budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved. And now as amended, if council wishes to.
I would always like.
Sorry, just a point of clarification. If you're accepting this whole budget, it does include your water sewer amendments.
That's what I thought.
If you change your rates down to a twelve and a half percent increase, you'd need to reappropriate an approximate amount of three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars more from your sewer fund balance to cover your operating expenses. Just so we're amending to the.
We should just leave it.
Correct numbers. And I can go grab the actual off my desk or Andrea, if you have that ratio.
So, so all those things that we talk about adding that everybody says don't count, they actually do count.
Well, yeah, all the budgets count.
So, so when you're talking about, we're shifting DPW over and we're saving money in general fund. But now you say we gotta have three hundred fifty thousand hours more. That's in part because we're, we're, we're adding two positions or that, that you put into the sewer fund. So I'm, I'm right. It's like.
When we shifted those expenses over to.
The arguments are good.
That when we shifted those expenses over to the water and sewer fund, one of the things that we did was restore a retirees FTE that was not in the first preliminary budget. That is in the second preliminary, this modified budget. So the overall, and we took three hundred thirty thousand more of the two funds to put in the general fund. So your overall combined increase on your water sewer appropriated fund balance is thirty thousand from the water and forty seven thousand dollars from the sewer. An average DPW worker is probably around seventy thousand dollars. So, you know, really in effect, one other perspective is that the increase in this modification was restoring an FTE to the DPW that in the first preliminary budget had been planned for to not be there through attrition.
Right, for elimination in the preliminary budget.
So then when we say, okay, we don't want to raise the rates twenty five percent, we want to go to twelve and a half. The annual rate would be approximately five hundred and twenty three dollars and fifty cents versus five hundred and eighty two dollars. Um, the additional use of fund balance to cover that gap is gonna be three hundred sixty five thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. So you would end up appropriating one point six million, almost one point seven versus one point three one one.
I'm sorry, Angela, can you say that again?
Sure. Um, in the sewer fund we're talking about, if we have a twenty five percent rate increase, the budget calls for a one point three million dollar use of fund balance. If we have a twelve point five percent increase, we would have an approximate one point seven million dollar use of fund balance in the twenty twenty three year.
So I, I would recommend going with twelve point five and leave it to staff to make three hundred thousand dollars in reductions in the sewer water funds or whatever, sewer fund. That would be my direction to staff.
How do you?
Twenty, twenty five percent, seven hundred and thirty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty, so three quarters of a million. It, right?
So.
The, the, the twenty five percent represents an increase in twenty twenty three, three hundred or seven hundred and thirty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty. So the money's in the, in the, um, going into the sewer fund by the increase at twenty five percent. I mean, everybody's gonna be paying. Right now, if they're four sixty five, they're gonna be paying.
Five eighty.
Five eighty, one sixty.
Yeah, so it's an increase at the twenty five percent increase. It's an, it's an increase of one, one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Break down all three.
And, and the twelve and a half is fifty seven. Fifty.
So if you take your, if you take your proposed increase of general fund tax revenue, your four percent water revenue, your twelve and a half percent sewer revenue, the cost to each citizen, just divided by a straight twelve months, is ten dollars a month. So it's about a hundred and twenty four dollars, fifty dollars in tax, sixteen in water and fifty eight in sewer at a hundred, I'm sorry, at twelve and a half percent. You do that same calculation, you take fifty of general fund taxes on the average house value of seventy one thousand.
No, no, do it, do it on a hundred. We're doing a revale, you know.
Better finish.
So you, on an average of seventy one thousand, it's fifty dollars more in real property tax, sixteen dollars in water and then one twenty four in sewer. Divided by twelve, it's fifteen dollars a month for per citizen of Augsburg. So just to kind of look at it from two perspectives that way.
The way I look at it is it's uh, uh, three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars more a year, which, which some people, which, which some people would say, well, that's not very much, but that's on top of the two thousand four hundred and forty dollars a year that, that they already pay in combined fees and taxes, which is, which is one of the highest rates in the state of New York. So it's not insignificant, especially given, especially given all the social economic data.
I don't think she was trying to insinuate.
No, I know she's not. I'm just.
Staff's not. Staff's not the cause of all, you need to remember that.
Well, we have a one point four minute, two, one point two million dollar thirty year payment. People decided to do it.
We have a half a million dollar payment coming up.
Unready.
Unready.
So I, I think ultimately the question though, before you want to do your vote to amend is whether you, whether there's consensus to reduce the proposed rate increases for water and sewer. So the preliminary budget adopted as well as proposed amendments both carry increases, twenty five percent for sewer, four percent water. We did have a public hearing tonight. There were no comments on either.
Is there a consensus on the four percent?
I'm fine with four percent on the water.
Okay, so that's. Yes, and is there a consensus on the start with the twenty five percent?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely not. I'm, I'm, I'm only going for twelve point five percent and I'm not gonna vote for a budget that increases at the same time. You guys can vote for it, but I'm not going to.
We have two, Mike have a.
Mike? What's up? Um, four percent twenty five?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Twelve point five percent.
Yep.
Yes. Yes, and twenty five?
I can't vote for the budget and, and vote for that. That was, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to say.
Did Mike say yes?
Yes.
Yes, I, I'm yes also.
So.
So you're gonna end up at a, I don't know if you got enough votes for the budget.
You're getting four.
You're gonna end up at the default. I'm not gonna vote for the budget if we're increasing sewer rates that much. That was my deal.
So I think the vote on the table is to um.
Preliminary.
It's just.
No, this is going to be.
No, this is, no, it's not.
This is the preliminary.
This is to amend the preliminary and then you would, there are two more resolutions that would have to come. You can do the same one if you want for a final, but the amending is the motion on the table.
I mean, I just don't see it at a twelve and a half percent where you're gonna get the other, get the monies. I mean.
I, I, I would turn it over to staff and, 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 and let them come up with another two or three hundred thousand hours in savings.
From sewer?
Yep.
Where? To amend, the motion on table is to uh, amend the preliminary, preliminary budget with, which the change increased the sales tax to two point six million and the sewer rates would increase twenty five percent. The water rate would increase four percent. Those are the items that have had consensus.
Is your consensus to vote to amend?
Yes.
No.
I don't see how.
I, I'm no also.
These are the things that we just got done talking about in the ad. The preliminary budget.
As long as we, you gotta look at the whole picture. You can't, you can't feast me.
I know. That's what they're trying to tell us is if you, if you do that, then you're throwing this more money out of the general fund, which less people pay.
Comes out of the same people's pocket.
They have already done a roll call to, they have agreed six to one to amend it, but I have to have it as amended.
Shane, where do you see where you could find any money out of the sewer fund? Is it even a possibility? I mean, I know we're banging our heads together up here, but I mean.
Yeah, there was. Two hundred thousand?
I mean, the only lines that we can actually cover the materials, we can't even cover materials as well as chemicals. Maybe building agents, a little bit of equipment, maybe.
Then how come we're able to take one point five million out of capital, which is all generated by that same fund? And, and pay for a, a backer truck and pay for eight hundred thousand for a water plant and, and two hundred and fifty thousand for a truck? I mean, I don't, you know, it's like, there's, there's gotta be, there's gotta be two hundred thousand in savings in there. So I'll, I'll do twelve point five percent as part of the overall package and, and uh, leave it to staff to find whatever savings they can and so that uh, the fund balance isn't hit that bad. Can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, you got four votes?
Right, I mean, so.
I got Mike.
The whole concept of your.
Myself. So there's four votes.
Wait a minute, I didn't, I didn't give an affirmative here. I was trying to talk. So ultimately, what you're asking for is to send, so we're, we're, the action on the table is to amend the preliminary budget, correct?
We've already done it once.
Right, and now with the proposal, after the break, Andrea and Angela came in with additional information. Are we looking to adopt that as a preliminary amendment right now?
No, because, because the, the motion to increase sewer rate, sewer fees by twenty five percent failed. And I, I, we have, we have. No, so now, now the motion is to increase them only twelve point five percent. And to have staff go back and, and find the savings. Uh, however, they gotta do it to limit the loss to fund balance. Which sounds perfectly reasonable to me and, and uh, that would be the overall, that would solve. We'd have an agreement.
So. A preliminary agreement.
Well, yeah, that we can vote on as the final.
We can't vote on a final, so it tells us that, how to balance that other part of that budget. We can't.
Sure we can. We're given direction. And we trust them to do it. As long as I don't cut my thirty five hundred.
You can't, so we're looking to adopt in a preliminary amended budget with the hopes that they're gonna be able to find three hundred K in additional savings?
They'll find whatever they can. Otherwise, the rest would, would come out of fund balance. It's completely ridiculous. It's completely insane.
So I just, there is, there was a motion on the table that needs to be voted on. Uh, I'm just gonna ask the clerk to read that motion back so that it can be voted on up or down.
Thank you.
So it is a motion to amend bill number one seventeen with the changes that council discussed that this interim city manager has made those adjustments in addition to a recommendation that the sales tax revenue be changed back to two point six million.
We already voted.
You voted to amend. You have to vote as amended. So it's one more roll call and that will be as amended. The resolution will be amended if this next roll call vote.
Wait, wait, wait. Kathy, I'm sorry. Did that, did that include uh?
That has the increase in water and sewer rates because there was not consensus to reduce the water and sewer rates. Now, it may not have.
I, I thought we already did this.
But it was vote, there was consensus to move forward with the proposed increases in the rates. There were four members uh, in support of that. The mayor, Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Scamperly and Counselor Powers were in support of the proposed increases to the rates. So that motion needs to be voted on. That is the motion on the table for an amended preliminary budget.
Cause you can go for amended preliminary budget and then they can come back and say, we can find X amount of dollars to get us to eighteen percent.
This is not the final budget.
No, no, I know that, but I'm saying if you, if the direction that you wanna give them tonight is to get us down to X amount of percentage for a tax increase in the, in the sewer, then they can come back to that instead of just saying, just find it. Like, they can try to find it. I mean, at least they could say, we can get you down to an eighteen percent and give us what a number actually looks like, rather than just being hard set on just one thing.
But we are voting on it at twenty five percent.
Fifteen percent, four forty two, four hundred forty two thousand, eight hundred ninety.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
I don't even know what I'm voting on anymore.
Would you like me to read it again?
Yes.
Please.
So this is a motion to amend bill number one seventeen with the directives and agreements through consensus of council that include decreasing the police department line item four two one down to forty five hundred, line ending in five five zero down to seven thousand. Um, increasing yeah, decreasing the police department overtime, A three one two zero point one two zero, making that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And increasing the sales tax revenue to two point six million. Did I leave anything out?
Keeping the sewer rates and water rates as proposed with a twenty five percent increase in the sewer rates and a four percent increase in the water rates. That is where.
I don't remember, I don't remember that being.
It's in the original bill one seventeen. There was no consensus of council to change those rates.
Yes. The twenty five percent.
Counselor Reish?
And that, that captures the reduction down to three police officers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that is referenced there, sir. Yes, thank you. So Counselor Reish, your vote?
I voted no already. I thought I did because it, because it contained a twenty five percent increase in the sewer rates. Thought we did this already, but okay, I vote no.
We did do it once.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dilaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher? I'm sorry, sir. Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Denied.
So we did that twice now. So the, the.
No, we didn't.
So I, I would make, I would make a motion to do all the amendments as discussed with the one, with the one exception. do all the amendments as discussed with the one, with the one exception of reducing uh, the water and sewer increase down to twelve point five percent, and I'd like a second and a vote on that if we could.
I'll second the twelve point five, but the four percent is in the water, and that's where it's staying.
You, you just referenced water and sewer, I'm assuming you meant sewer reduced to twelve point.
The only thing I've changed, it's the same, it's the same thing, except.
I understand, but you, you said water.
You said water.
I just wanna make sure you meant sewer reduced to twelve point five percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Fisher, that was the second?
Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
No, not until we find out where the other part of the money is going to come from.
Councillor Powers?
No.
Denied.
So why doesn't staff go back and take a look at the sewer fund and see if they can find any savings at all?
Like, I'm not opposed to decreasing it, I just need to know how we're going to pay for the decrease. Like, if they come back and say, we can deal with an eighteen percent, I'm all worried, but we just can't say, find it. We've, we've told them to find it all along, and they've found it, and found it, and found it, and now we're.
They found it, now we're not.
So, is there a consensus to have staff go back and take a look at trying to reduce costs in the sewer fund?
Obviously, I mean, everybody wants.
Oh, I just wanna make sure they know what we're, that that's what we want.
I just.
We just asked.
Why don't you work on it and see what we can find out? Okay, I mean, that's not, no.
Well, I'm already here.
I don't know when you're gonna do it.
I don't. Well.
But that's funny, because, you know, I said from December first, how much little, or, but earlier, November first, how much little time we had, and you, and just kept pushing it out there, pushing it out next week to week after.
So don't. Well, let's not get hairy with each other, let's just figure this out.
So, there is a special meeting of council that votes for tomorrow, there's still items to go through on your agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we're not done.
Well, if we're not going to vote on this, then we need a motion to table.
Motion to table.
It was taken off the table, amended.
Never actually passed.
Correct, so.
Oh, right, right, my bad.
So Angela, you're saying.
Wasn't that yesterday?
You're saying the operating stuff doesn't include all the capital stuff, is that what you're saying, basically? So it's like impossible to find any savings?
Yes. I mean, possible, no, but I mean, if you just look at the sewer fund, the sewer department administration. You have no choice there, um.
That's J five.
J six, sorry, I mean, honestly, we can probably look through this. Um, on J six, your personnel is fixed, based, I mean, we're gonna go with that for right now. Your other expenses are thirty-seven thousand twenty-five, which is your computer system, which you're committed to in a contract. The next big one is two hundred thousand dollars for the long-term control plan, there's nothing you can do there. That's gotta be done, that's coming out of fund balance, by the way. And then the next section, the point eights, that's tied to salary. Flipping your page to J eight, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of salary. You have capital construction of one point eight million, that is the Main Street pump station, a million dollar grant for that, the eight hundred thousand we've been talking about. So we could talk about a thirty-seven thousand dollar material and supply line, of which is pretty much expended nine months throughout the year, so there's maybe some money to pick up there. Um, water pollution control, turning the page again, and if I'm going too fast, just let me know, that's J ten. You have a capital construction of ten thousand, I, without my notes, don't really recall what. A shed, right? Okay, then in your next section, the point fours.
I'm sorry, what did Shane say?
He said it was for a shed, but he's more than willing to leave the equipment sitting outside.
So the next section on.
Where's it sitting now?
J ten.
Where's the equipment sitting now?
Outside.
Okay.
We did, through the construction, you could have a garage, all the structure. But Marcus made, made it.
What is it?
Shed.
Can't hear you, sir.
I know, what, what are we storing in the shed?
Equipment.
Equipment, spare parts, stuff like that.
We have room down, we have room down in the, uh, crescent, down in the barns at the bottom of the hill now, in the crescent?
How about Washington Street?
But there's a lot of parts in there too, we can make it work for you.
Okay. So there's a savings of ten thousand dollars on G eight one three zero point three three zero.
Okay, so your next section in J ten is your point fours. That's five hundred seventy-three thousand, of which two hundred and twenty-five thousand is your heat, lights, and power, um. The new system, Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, uses UV lighting, it is a substantial increase, we're not really sure what that's going to be, we could.
I thought it was supposed to save money to plant.
If, if, saving money.
Chemicals.
But we just don't know.
I wonder, did you figure in the methane and the savings on that?
That, they, we don't know what the savings is, we have a grant.
Might be three hundred thousand dollars or something.
So moving on, um, if we're done with that section, the point fives is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one twenty-eight of that is your contract, we think. So we could talk about the remaining eight grand if you would like, um. Then your sewer debt service, um, is your next one on J twelve, which is a non-negotiable. We did just close on the final part of that money, the twelve million, so we're now at thirty-one million approximately, I think.
I think you're going way too fast, so I'm dismissing everything real quickly, though. So like, heat lights powered. So it was a hundred and forty-five thousand and twenty, it was a hundred and thirty thousand and twenty-one. Just a hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-two, so why don't we go with a hundred and fifty thousand?
So, because she, the reason for that is because, as, as Angela just articulated and Shane, we have switched to UV.
I saw the UV lights, I'm aware of that, but, so. I, I just don't, uh.
I don't see three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
You could.
And power's going up.
Seventy-five right there. Why don't we go with, uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
It's.
No, because since you're, I mean, you basically, you're you're guessing. I thought Dank sold this, uh, you know, how, how much money we were gonna save, because it was so much more efficient, all brand-new pumps and everything else, and we're gonna save a ton of money.
That was before me, and I do believe there will be a savings, I just feel a lot of commitment with that run for a year. I know only guard, or the press and a lot less, we'll set it every day, we're down to maybe once or twice a week, so there is a savings, I just don't know what it is. I don't wanna over commit.
And how much is the savings with those two, those two retired, uh, DPW people? How much is that worth?
I think she just said over thousands.
One retiree was put into the water sewer fund fifty-fifty. It would be an approximate savings of, rough math, twenty-eight thousand.
I thought it was.
Per fund.
I thought the changes you made resulted in an increase of sixty-five thousand in the water fund and ninety-seven thousand in the sewer fund.
The water was an increase of thirty thousand six seventy-nine all in, and the sewer was forty-seven thousand eight twenty-seven.
Oh, that's forty-seven thousand dollars.
Angela, back on J ten under consultants, I have.
Or else you're not gonna find it.
Dribbling, uh, in my, in my notes here, and I can't read it, but I, I've got it highlighted at, at, for the consultants at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yes, that is the, go ahead, sorry, that's a Dank contract.
No, I, I'm curious to know what I wrote. I'm assuming I asked once before, I'm wondering if there's a savings in that line.
That's the Dank contract, so there, there would be no savings in that line.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other contractual expense, uh, J two?
J two?
Sorry, we're bumping around here, maybe.
That's our problem. J two is a summary page. And what is driving that J two number of a hundred and one thousand, if that's the one that you're interested in? A thousand dollars to administration for drug testing is one hundred thousand dollars on J ten, which is related to Sledge at Casella.
Did you budget enough for the, the fees, people bringing in the buil, the building we build, I assume we're actually gonna make money on that this year, the one you talked us into, the building for the uh, receiving the, the sewage? Must have been a cost benefit, and now, and we're making money on that this year?
So the revenue in this budget includes money from Hewleton, which was an increase of thirty-one thousand three ninety.
Huge.
Which is not a full year, it's a twenty-five percent of the year increase of revenue.
At a rate that we have not yet all agreed to.
Right.
Right.
Especially the cheese plant, that probably should be in industrial.
First up is receiving, we had not established rates with council, um, prior to the November tenth.
I don't even know what a rate would look like, I mean. Shane, will you come to the mic though, so Mike can hear you?
In comparison, I think Carthage's rate, speaking of development rate, they average, I would say around ninety to a little over a hundred a year.
In revenue.
In revenue, but their rate is at the five percent. Or five cents, I'm sorry. So ours at ten percent, I, I, we're gonna get a revenue, it's just I don't know how much. So we can put a revenue in there.
You're not talking about heels, and you're talking.
I'm talking about deceptive receiving states.
Yeah, we already voted on that.
We established the rate, but we don't actually.
But there's no revenue in the budget for it.
You just asked for, so we don't have a revenue in the line for that.
Oh.
So if we wanted.
If you wanna put a revenue in there, but we need to make an educated guess.
So.
What would be your educated?
I, I wouldn't go much more than forty thousand, just to be safe for the year, hopefully it comes in at a hundred forty thousand. We do have to do some marketing stuff at the beginning of the year, you know, put it out there that we're, we're open. Which I'm assuming the development authority is already for us. So.
It wouldn't take stuff from Canada, would it?
I don't know how that would go, go back and forth across the bridge if you're allowed to or not.
So you're only drawing from a half of a radius?
Yep.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if Messina can't, Potstam have these facilities as well?
I don't, no, I think, no, the only one that's, the closest one would be Carthage or Watertown. Because I know when we had issues when the plant was down, we would had have gone to Watertown to dump our backer and stuff like that.
So there's no estimates on that?
I, I, I think the estimate was back, which I think was probably two thousand nine, two thousand twenty at a hundred thousand, but I also think that that estimate was that we were gonna be aggressive at a lower rate.
I'd say seventy-five thousand.
I mean, do you think Dank could give us the better review?
Huh?
It, it's really gonna be a, a guess at this point, and our rate is one of the higher rates, so we.
But you'd have to go to Carthage or somewhere else if you weren't coming.
I, I think there will be users, I just don't, like I said, I, I would be comfortable with forty, but if you want us to try to hit seventy-five, we'll try to hit it. But that's.
Yeah.
Can't promise it, but I can.
Am I in favor of that? Is anybody else in favor of that?
About forty?
Seventy-five thousand.
I'm not.
I'm in favor of it.
All right, fifty thousand, there's one, two.
You're saying potentially a hundred, so half.
He said a hundred and forty when he started.
You know, you see, we was at forty, so let's call it fifty. Yeah. That's, that's a little bit easier.
There's fifty thousand.
And then another question, if we get to the point where people are saying that they want us closer to that rate, we could always come back and you guys could readjust the rate, right, Andrea?
They readjust the rate, and it's gonna be half or three quarters of the revenue, so.
But you get more volume.
Well, yeah, as long as you get like a lot more volume.
That could be the tipping point of why someone's not coming.
I know.
You know, it's the gases that, you know, the fuel cost is right on the edge.
Do you have a contract with somebody right now, is that in the budget?
We had, the only person that comes to us right now is the county.
But their rate will, we, we are informing them, or just informing them that their rate is going up.
And that the rate.
How much is that, is, is, is that revenue in the budget? How much do we make this year?
I don't know if it's, it's in the budget or not, I don't, I, I don't have that number, but I can get it for you tomorrow.
Wait, because you said we had a contract with them, and it must be.
No, I said there were some that wanted to have a contract with us.
Do you know what?
They would guarantee us.
You know how many gallons it was?
They, I believe they're choosing not to come now because of our rate.
Oh, really? Where are they going?
Probably, I believe they're in Watertown, they're already in Watertown, but they're gonna bring so much here.
Oh.
So just to spread the wealth.
Well, as a trial, so they would understand how everything worked if they needed to as a backup, so if something happened in Watertown, but now it's cost prohibitive for that entity to do that, at our, at the rate that was established.
I thought you said it was the county.
Well, there's two, so the county automatically comes here, but during the night we talked about the price, I said there was some of that wanted to come.
The county comes here for leachate.
Yeah, leachate, so they're, they're gonna continue coming, I just don't count the gallons they've used this year.
So is, there's no revenue in there from the county leachate?
Yeah.
Pretty low.
Yeah, they, yeah, it's.
And Dank, and Dank told me that they didn't bring their leachate here, but if it's county leachate, then it's Dank's league.
No, it's, it's Saint Lawrence County itself, it's not, it's the county itself drawing off, like, our old landfill and stuff like that, but it's not, that's not the development authority. So I, I mean, there might be.
Must be a lot of, that must be a lot of gallons.
No, it hasn't, actually, this year hasn't been a lot, and actually, we have to take it, I mean, we have to get permission to be able to take it on a daily basis while they were constructing the plant. Depending on our flows, they're allowed to take it, or they had to turn it away.
So, I'm not sure where we're at.
Fifty, I think was the last number that was put out. Shane said forty.
We agreed on, we agreed on fifty thousand.
I don't think we did, we had three, is there anyone else for fifty thousand?
Yeah, we have, I thought we had four. Mike said it, and, uh.
I just don't feel comfortable, I just, I just don't know what to guess on.
You just said fifty.
Shane, I'm sorry, did you say it's forty or fifty?
We said forty, but they said fifty, next time that we can try to meet it.
Is there a consensus?
It's less than seventy-five, so.
Is there a consensus? Anyone else on council?
We don't have four votes.
Not real big on projections and, and revenue.
You guys really wanna raise rates about by that?
No, I just, I just. No, I just, I'm comfortable, if he thinks forty, then I'm comfortable.
That's what I mean, you keep saying that you wanna count on staff and staff's telling you, your face is fifty thousand or forty and, and you're saying no.
He just said.
It makes no sense.
Right, staff says forty, I mean.
You either listen to staff all the time or listen to staff only when you want.
Oh, that's not a fair assessment.
Um, so.
So, yeah.
Forty. Is there a consensus for forty?
For, if Shane says forty, then I'm fine with forty.
Consensus for forty?
Yes.
If Shane thinks that's a realistic number, then.
Shane says back to forty.
I'm going with forty.
That would go on a revenue line.
Eight.
So I think that puts us up to fifty thousand, if we hit it.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, I must have missed eight.
Reduced the capital construction by ten thousand and you've added forty thousand in revenue.
Yep.
I think that's what you've done.
Yeah.
I believe Angela said there might have been some savings in another line back on, uh, in sewer maintenance, materials and supplies.
Well, she said there was only eight thousand to work with in there, something, if I correct, that, what it was, we could kick around eight thousand.
Why did you increase gasoline by twenty-five thousand?
Where, John? What, what, what are you looking at?
I don't know, I saw it earlier.
It's in the sewer budget, it, it got taken out in the original budget, it had it there, it was taking out, we got the original budget back, the very first one. It took me a little bit to catch it, so I had to have it back and like I had to come to July and ask for eighty-five thousand more dollars. The fuel prices haven't gone down.
Yeah, can we, can we like lower that by ten thousand, given the fact that?
I mean.
Oil, oil's gonna, oil's gonna go like this pretty quick?
No, but if the money's not there, do we stop driving? I, I, I don't.
I'm not in favor of that.
It's, we're at pretty close to that or over that right now for this year's budget. In la- and then, in last year, it wasn't, the prices climbed after part of the snow season.
Could we write a Sam Grant?
For fuel?
Not tonight, you get it.
Does staff have any more ideas? Any other ideas?
Kathy, where are we at? Are we still on a resolution?
You're still, you're still in discussion, Mayor. Um, you did vote on the amended resolution, but it was denied.
But now we're in the new business?
Well, we still have a motion that if council wishes to continue discussing the motion to amend bill number seven, you have not passed an as amended resolution, so there either needs, you need to continue or there needs to be a motion to table. But you can't move to new business until you've closed this out, so to speak.
So what is, what are we voting on for this?
You don't have a motion on the table right now. This, this motion has not been passed as amended. Council approved to amend bill number one seventeen, but the amendments that were proposed have not been passed as amended.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on, uh, those, those amendments.
Can we vote to amend it and just take out the water and sewer, just amend this part and like leave water and sewer separate, or no, we not allowed to do that?
I wouldn't.
Okay, whatever. Just trying to get some type of progress actually accomplished.
What do we have to do, Kathy, to move on?
You can, no, you, you don't have to vote yes on anything ever. Um, you can vote to table the, uh, to table the motion to amend the preliminary budget, which is bill number one seventeen. Or you can continue to have discussions on bill number one seventeen. Right now, the sticking point seems to be the sewer rate.
Right.
There's not consensus to adopt a twenty-five percent increase in sewer rate. Or there isn't consensus to adopt.
I think it's stuck on the sewer rate, if we could find some type of.
Want to fold it up or down, or do we want?
So, um, the sixty thousand or fifty thousand that we just saved is insignificant in terms of the rate?
It's, it is in the end, if you take out the capital construction, I don't know, maybe you didn't wanna do that, Shane said you could. So that was ten thousand.
You want to take that out or consensus act?
I thought we already voted on that stuff.
No, I.
We've got, we, we, we talked about a forty thousand dollar revenue increase for hauling, right?
And a decrease in, in expenditures in the capital construction.
Capital construction at ten, so that's fifty thousand dollars.
But maybe there wasn't consensus for that ten.
I, I think we should leave it as the capital expenditures, so.
We can store that outdoors, I'm, I'm fine with the removing the shed and adding the fifty thousand dollars in revenue for an additional fifty thousand.
My point is it doesn't make any difference in the rate, I mean, what is it, twenty-two percent now, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Twenty-three and a half, twenty-four and a half.
Yeah.
Might as well let them keep the tools under the shed.
So you would want to vote to table this, vote back, you want to vote?
Yeah, I'll vote.
I think now that we've gone over the, any possible amendment, umpteen times, we should, we should take a vote on as a method.
We already did.
Well.
Voted down.
So.
Huh?
Voted down, this, that business is done. We, we still have a previous preliminary amended budget that is still in the works. Right after our break.
Percent tax increase, yes. That's what stands on the table right now. So we, we still have not accepted the changes that bring it down to under the two percent tax cap. And our current preliminary budget is the old twelve percent increase.
We need to vote to table that?
No, that's, we've already accepted that one. Well, tonight, we just voted down, bringing that down with all of our amendments and all the work we did. We just voted against bringing it down to under two percent.
Well, you got, if, it's like you said, if you take the, like the goal said, if you take the water and sewer out of it right now, you've got all the amendments that were passed, so what's the problem? I say we do the twelve point five percent and let staff figure it out.
I think that's incredibly unfair. I mean, why don't we just say, hey, let's lower taxes another fifty percent and let staff figure it out? You know, ridiculous. No, we've been over this, we got the numbers, staff is here, I mean, it, we got it down to a two percent. It's completely ridiculous to say something like that, come on, come on, it, it's.
Well, it's completely ridiculous for you to propose raising taxes fifteen percent too.
I'm, I'm.
Sewer, twenty-five percent, that's what you would have done, right from the beginning.
Are you willing to like work at anything else but twelve and a half? Like, are you willing to go like twenty to like pull some other numbers out of, I, I, you know what I mean, like are we stuck, are we fixated on a number, is it a dollar amount? I know, it, it stinks either way, but we have to come to something. You don't wanna do twenty-five, can we like look at twenty and then come back with something, I mean, are we, is there wiggle room or?
I'm perfectly happy, I wanna take a break, it's eleven o'clock.
I'm not taking.
And, uh.
Let's get it done, find the money.
And, and maybe we'll have, maybe we'll have some ideas over the night.
Well, what do you got for ideas, you know?
What do you think?
Show me something, Dan, where you found any savings.
Where do you think, yeah, and it's all right there that we all agreed to already.
Angela's.
And now you want another three hundred fifty, seventy-five thousand or whatever the number is, I mean, no, it's just, it's not happening, they just told you that.
So if I could just offer perspective on this, we did a model of, as you know, many different ways to raise these sewer rates, they all end at the same spot. You know, six hundred dollars a year plus or minus. So if you only do twelve and a half this year, you're just going to have to take, agree to take more out of your fund balance. The advantage of maybe splicing this rate increase over two years is to say, okay, we're gonna do the twelve and a half percent this year. We know we need to allocate three hundred and sixty, three ten, whatever that number became tonight, out of the additional fund balance. That will give, there's a couple of things in this sewer and water budget that aren't really well known, and that is we lost some major users. So there's already some estimates in these revenue numbers that may be high, may be low, I mean, hopefully not too far off. But there are some guess, educated guesses in this, or s- educated estimates. So that's just another perspective is twelve and a half this year, but you're probably gonna be right back here doing twelve and a half again next year.
That's fine.
But it'll at least give the sewer and water funds a chance to do what they're gonna do.
You just heard it from staff.
With twelve months of.
I'm, I'm glad to see some movement over down there, John, holy cow.
Revenue from your United Helpers, your prisons, they fell off kind of mid-year, so we did some, uh, projections on those sewer numbers as well, revenue wise.
We might end up with an industrial user and, and Hues and that, that, that may be more.
So you're saying it would be possible to do a twelve and a half, but we're going to have to follow it up to twelve and a half next year to get, to, to catch up.
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe, maybe not quite, I mean, we were at.
But it's something we should be prepared for.
Oh, yeah, it's not off the table that there would be another sizable increase in that sewer fund.
We can divide the sizable increase.
I mean, if that helps, yeah.
So I would propose the exact same, except.
But we'd have to take that from the general.
I make a motion, I make a motion for all the changes we've talked about, and the only change from the one that failed is that the sewer rate is at twelve point five percent.
Anticipating it to be that way again next year.
Well, we're not voting on next year's budget, we're not, yeah. So that's my motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Counselor Riche, can you repeat that? All changes.
All changes, everything the same, except sewer rate's going to twelve and a half, knowing that it's coming out of the fund balance.
So you're adding coming out of the fund balance, cause we had already voted on that. Okay, thank you.
And the new rate is twelve point five, not twenty-five percent.
Understood. With the additional coming out of the general fund.
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five coming out of the sewer.
Sewer.
Now I made the motion and Bill seconded it.
Got that.
My head hurts.
Kathy, would you please call in?
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
So.
So we're just gonna vote on the budget now, we'll be all good to go, let's just vote on this thing.
Yeah.
We gotta, we got one of those.
Well, we accept, we, we.
First, first we have to vote on the.
No, 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 no.
We just did, no.
Don't backtrack.
Yes, sir, you do, you do.
So now we have one eighteen.
One eighteen was originally tabled, so if the council wishes to entertain.
So I make a motion to take bill number one eighteen off the table.
Second it.
Okay. Then I make a motion to move a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget.
Second it.
As amended.
As we just did.
Correct.
Like we just, we just accepted the amendment, so this would just be to accept what we just did.
Which has two point six in sales tax.
Right.
Three police officers, the pool.
Which we can always get rid of if we need to.
Changes in healthcare and overtime and uniforms.
I think that comes.
Alright, so was that seconded?
Yes, sir, that Counselor Riche.
So now we discuss.
Now we vote on it.
No, we discuss.
Oh.
Every resolution and motion has a discussion period.
Even at eleven o'clock at night?
Even at eleven o'clock at night.
Okay, start discussing. So we have a big white elephant in the room and, uh, you know, obviously we've been ordered to have five men on shift and, uh, it's already hit the newspapers. So I think we should hire the four firefighters and save the city. This year, what would amount to about sixty-four thousand and going into next year about two seventy and the following year. I know it's probably not gonna pass, but I'm throwing it up.
I'm gonna.
I, I, I support that and, and the, and the simple fact that we won't be paying out additional overtime hours that, that'll come with this hazard pay, as long as they meet the criteria, we're gonna be looking at a hefty bill as a penalty due to the arbitration case that was just handed down. And I think that, that savings can help mitigate some of that, uh, that cost going forward. I don't know where or if the fire department has four firefighters ready to roll. Maybe talks with them with the assurance that we get them.
I'm just wondering where.
Excuse me. You, this is a question. With that concept, the contract expires in twenty twenty-five and we start from scratch.
You can go up and speak, yeah. When the contract expires, we don't start from scratch.
No.
So, well, you, you, I, I apologize, no, of course not. I, I know that more than anybody.
We canvassed the, uh, four mem- four people on the list, they have all returned their canvas letters as being interested in the job, as I stated in both of my budget presentations.
Yeah, yeah.
Two could start almost immediately, the other two, um, not necessarily. But a decision will have to made relatively soon to make that six month period as far as the academy goes. Um, I would suggest that we still apply for a safer grant again next year and add to it, cause there's some potential retirements. Um, as you're aware, we also lost the safer grant. During my budget presentation, I was clear that I would not recommend hiring with no answer on the safer grant and no answer on the arbitration. We now have an answer. And you, you, there's a lot of guesses and can we maybe get this and can we maybe get that, I can guarantee you the savings, guaranteed, minimal saving, minimum. The overtime rate goes down, there could be way more savings, so to me, it doesn't make any sense, but it's ultimately the seventy you decide.
What's your guarantee on the savings?
Minimum this year of sixty thousand.
Next year?
I believe it was two fifty-five, it was in my presentation both times. Which would cover, which would probably cover a fourth police officer this year, if he got hired, if a police officer got hired halfway through the year, and would cover three police officers next year.
Can't take away from the money.
Sorry, what did you say?
What'd you say, Mike? It kind of muffled.
I said, you, 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 you can't not acknowledge the savings.
And it doesn't appear the five man minimum's going anywhere for the next two years, so.
Either, I mean, with that decision today, we either pay the overtime or we save money.
We immediately start saving without paying overtime when we go to the five minimum.
If, if I can, um, once it is approved, you immediately save, because the way the contract reads, if you're going to hire four people, the hazard pay for that, those four people would cease until the four people go to the academy, so it's an instant savings, once the budget passes. For, uh, twenty twenty-three, January first, there's a savings, and if you have got approval, I could probably have two of them here by January first, counting as a man.
Yeah, well, if we increase that fire department by four people, by eight, that means that there will be thirty, thirty-five years that we're committed to have these firemen. And, you know, we'll, as, as, hopefully we're smart enough to bring volunteers in at some point. And, um, and you're stuck with that many firemen and, uh, the fire department needs to go down, overtime, nutrition, and volunteers need to come in, that, that, that fire department cannibalize the police department, the DPW, all, all capital improvements in this city, all recreation, everything, and then we'll end up in bankruptcy if this contract holds.
Well, for the next two years, I believe the contract's gonna hold and there's a savings and there's retirement. Well, for the next two years, I believe the contract's going to hold, and there's a savings, and there's retirement coming up. So, so there is no, um, they, they would be, you could, when the contract's up, you could lose people through a, through negotiations at that point.
The city, this city, bring this city down eventually, so this contract is broken.
And one, one last note that I don't know if the council is aware of. Um, I, I don't believe even the union, as opposed to the idea of, of a, um, combination department. We had eighteen people take our test last time. Eighteen people that wanted to get paid to be firefighters in Augsburg. So I don't know how many want to do it for nothing.
Other communities, uh, they think they manage, and it's, it's the answer to our financial problem. We can have four, that side of the fire departments, and have the special police and DPW and the other amenities.
Okay, let's.
Please, don't interrupt.
So let's, this, this, we know it's not going to pass, so let's just stay on track. It's eleven o'clock.
Vote on that amendment? Shall we vote on that amendment? Yes or no? It's a motion and a second.
I missed the second, sir. I apologize.
Mike Powers seconded.
Thank you.
Seconding what?
My, my, oh, good.
Well, I, I, yes, I did, but I, I, you know, it, it, it's, to be honest with you, it's been hard to keep track tonight. So, but with that being said, the chief brings up a good point. He can guarantee savings. We might be able to add that fourth additional police officer. I move to amend the adopted budget to incorporate the four firefighters and to bring on that fourth police officer.
So now we have.
That shows an immediate, that shows an immediate saving. The arbiter is clear that we have to, we have to acknowledge the, the firefighter, or the, uh, the minimum staffing to include the savings.
So, we're doing, Dan, as we know.
Is there a second for Counselor Powers's motion?
How many motions are out there?
There's, there's already one, and I, and I, I don't know whether.
There's one amendment to this one. I just proposed it.
Dan did before you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dan did. I didn't hear him say it, but.
Do you want to pull yours for Dan?
If Dan did, and I, I, I thought we were seconding the, this, an aspect of the discussion. I apologize. Yes.
I'd, I'd like to, let's vote for the firefighters. Yes or no? Then, then talk about police, because I don't disagree with it. And, uh, and I had it in the original budget, so.
So this is to add four firefighters, to amend, to add four firefighters. Mayor Scally?
No.
Counselor Dillaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
No.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Denied.
I'd, uh, call the question, take a vote to call the question on adopting the final budget as amended. Need four votes to do it. Can we call the roll on that?
I'd second it.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Approved.
Wait, wait, that, was that to call the question, or was that to adopt the budget?
That was to.
Adopt the budget.
Done then?
We still got to do water and sewer, and we still got to do.
I thought, I thought we already agreed that water and sewer was part of the resolution.
But they have their own resolutions.
You just got to have a vote on it.
Still got to vote on it.
And then, then we're done, right?
No, then we can do old business, new business.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, as far as the budget, those two items, water, sewer, never done.
Yeah.
But we already voted and agreed that it's twelve point five.
Oh, fuck. Can we go then? Can we move on?
I, uh, introduce one eleven.
Yes.
A local law to allow for the changes to the Augsburg Municipal Code, section one seven-seven, entitled Sewer Rates as Directed by the Adoption of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Budget.
I'll second it. Is, is it clear that it's twelve point five percent?
We're on water, right? No, sewer? Sewer, okay.
Is it, is it twelve point five percent increase?
Okay.
In accordance with the adopted budget?
Yeah.
Kathy, would you please call them all?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Who moved and seconded that?
Counselor Reese moved it. Counselor Dillaba seconded.
Okay, I missed it.
Did you say yes?
Is it my turn?
Yes, yes. Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
The last item for council action is bill number one twelve. A local law to allow for the changes in the Augsburg Municipal Code, section two fifteen, section thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, entitled Water Rates as Directed by the Adoption of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Budget.
I'll move that.
Second it?
Kathy, would you please call them all?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
I apologize. That was at four percent, correct, the water?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I, I'm for that. I'm sorry.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
No, we got to.
Still having agenda to go through.
We're not there yet.
Sit down, John.
So, new business? Want to have new business? Items for discussion? Um, okay, citizens' participation?
Oh, I do have one for you. Even though, um, the, like, the campers in the boats and, or like, all over the place, on corners and, and laneways and, um, there, there, I mean, you can't even see people. I mean, I, I've almost seen a couple accidents. I, I don't know if, I, I didn't think that we were doing that anymore, but it, there's, there's a lot of them. I mean.
We're constantly looking to enforce it, but I will circle back with code and police and nature.
Yeah, well, just look, I mean, I, I mean, don't, you know, don't send specifically, but I mean, you're driving around, you see all of a sudden, obviously, you can't see around that corner, and the old lady that pulls up there, and there's, it's a school, it's right up the school, the boot. So I mean, don't, if you don't want to, but I'm just saying that some, could be a kid walking across there, because park can't see it.
You're talking about campers, boats, RVs?
Yeah, between sidewalk and the curb.
To the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But are you talking about being too?
Between the sidewalk and the curb?
As long as.
Registered.
And as long as it's far enough away from the corner.
So we do want to bring an amendment to, to the code, because it is, it's a major issue for us plowing, too.
But if the issue is proximity to the corner.
I think if they're within twenty feet of the corner, they could do something, but if they're a little farther back. Some people got like, their whole side of their house is lined, like, you know, half a block line. Well, I mean,
Yeah.
any roadway that, that, it's like, that close to the intersection, I mean, obviously, it's, I mean, it, I don't think it falls under VNT. You're correct. Once it's off the road, it doesn't fall. No, nothing.
No.
Roadway, so it falls under the municipal code. And once it's registered, once it's registered, and it's in front of, actually, in front of your residence in particular, um, there is no law to enforce, so that's, we want to bring something in front of council, because it's, uh, we do get complaints on it. It's a, it's a pain for DPW to plow. Um, citizens complain to us all the time, so it's, yes, something that we have to bring to you guys to, uh, have it addressed. So, yes, something we need to work on. Right. Thank you, thank you.
That's all I have. Uh, any citizens' participation? Anyone wish to come up? Got two minutes? No? Uh, would you not have any?
There, I have, wait one quick second.
I have to check to see if there's anyone online. I do not see any hands raised.
Uh, we do not have a need for executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.